Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on March 4th, 2019, beginning at 7:03 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming out to be with us this evening. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Mays in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also please silence all cellphones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And if you would also now please join me in a moment of silence and unfortunately, once again, please keep our AISD family in your thoughts as there are continued pain going on in our district this evening. Thank you. So, the first item, we don't have any program or presentation this evening. We will move right to appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to recommend the board appoint the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Patrick Elementary and Assistant Principal for Rankin Elementary.
Very good. Is there a motion, Mr. Chappa?
Move that we adopt, that we approve the individuals discussed in closed session.
Mr. Hibbs?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve those recommendations. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
First, I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Principal for Patrick Elementary, Ms. Alicia Young. Alicia attended Adrian University for Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education, Master of Education and Curriculum and Instruction, most recently a 4th grade English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher at Sherrod Elementary, has also served as a principal in Illinois, a district learning partner, instructional coach, and a 4th grade computer magnet teacher. Alicia, congratulations.
Thank you. President Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for providing me with the opportunity to serve the students, the staff, and parents at Patrick Elementary. At this time, I would like to thank Dr. Cummings, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Boltang, Ms. Duran, my 4th grade team, my teaching partner Cathy Brown, and my Sherrod family for supporting and encouraging me in my new endeavor. To my amazing husband, thank who is also an educator, and my 12-year-old daughter who aspires to become an educator, and my 11-year-old son Jaden, who probably hasn't figured out that he's called to be an educator too. Thank you for allowing me to follow my dream of impacting the lives of students and educators on a larger scale. To Ms. Myers, Mr. Thomas, and my new Patrick family, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a part of your amazing team. From the moment I stepped foot on your campus, I could feel the positive climate and culture that you have set at Patrick. The work you've already accomplished is commendable. I look forward to serving with each of you. Recently, I received two homemade cards, one from my 11-year-old son Jaden and another from a 4th grade student in my class. My son wrote, "The world we know is as cold as snow, but the spruce of your love softens the blow. From your heartwarming love you show, to the smile on your face that makes you glow. You will brighten up the world one child at a time, like you did for me and helped me shine." Jaden Young. And from my 4th... And from one of my 4th grade students, "Dear Mrs. Young, you are my favorite teacher. You are the nicest, funniest, and prettiest teacher I've ever had. I want to come to school just to learn in your class because you make learning seem fun, and it is because you teach excellently." These cards reflect my reason why. I am honored to continue my journey of my why, of inspiring students to achieve greatness and supporting teachers as they provide exceptional learning experiences for children at Patrick Elementary. As our leadership statement says, "I have passion for the work, I am committed to personal growth, and I am dedicated to the team." Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Rankin Elementary, Ms. Sylvia Ledesma. Sylvia attended the University of Phoenix for Bachelor of Science in Business Management, UT Arlington for Master of Education and Curriculum and Instruction, most recently a 3rd and 4th grade bilingual teacher at Johns, has also taught 3rd and 4th grade bilingual in Laredo ISD, and has been a project leader for Motorola Incorporated. Sylvia, congratulations.
Thank you. President Rice, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this wonderful opportunity to serve the school community at Rankin Elementary. I feel truly blessed to have found a new home just a mile up the road from Johns. I would like to thank my current administrators, Vanessa Colón, Grecia Lopez, along with my extended family at Johns Elementary for their continued support. Serving in a leadership capacity was not always on my radar. My first priority was teaching students and affecting change. I wanted to make a difference in our students' lives, and I thought I could better accomplish that by being in the classroom. It was not until my greatest champion and mentor tossed me into the leadership arena, even though I resisted for many years. She never gave up until I accepted leadership roles. My growth as a leader would not have happened without her love and support. So Tammy Rogers, I thank you, wherever she is. Okay? I would also like to thank my Yoda, the person who trained me in the ways of the DDI force and one of the most intelligent and caring people I know. Lori Mosley, it's an honor and my privilege to be working with you again.
Same here, girl.
To my family, some of whom are here tonight and others who are watching online, in El Paso, San Antonio, and Pittsburgh, none of this would have been possible without your love and support. I truly believe that if one of us succeeds, we all succeed. In closing, I would like to paraphrase Luke 12:48, which states, "To whom much is given, much will be expected." To my new Rankin family, I will do my very best to meet, if not exceed, all their expectations. Thank you.
Congratulations to you both. Our district is blessed to have you. Our students are blessed. Congratulations in your new AP capacity. You're kind of setting the bar high there with children poetry and letters, just saying. That's hard to overcome. Sorry you had to follow that, but you were wonderful. One of the things that always resonates in these welcomes and greetings is the overwhelming appreciation for the opportunity to serve, which is what you stated. The other thing that I think is a little bit of irony in what you said, that it was someone else that was seeing something in you that you did not see, did not desire, and isn't that what you do as educators every day for our students? So, that's wonderful. Thank you for that. As is our custom, we ask that you follow Ms. Brown, right? You're subbing tonight, right? For Mr. Cale, yes, if you could follow Ms. Brown out to the lobby so that we have an opportunity to welcome you and congratulate you in person, and I would indulge, or ask the audience to indulge us as a board to please let us go first so that we can come back in and resume our business. We'll take a brief recess. It's 7:12 now. We'll come back at 7:25. All right. Going to call this meeting back to order. It is 7:25 PM. Next on our agenda, let's see, there's no public hearing. The open forum for agenda items, I see no cards. Is that correct, Ms. Benjamin?
That is correct.
Okay, we will. Continue on then. We're going to defer Action Item A to another meeting. He's not even listening.
No, I'm not.
We're going to defer Action Item A to another meeting, and maybe we really will now.
I'm excited.
No, in all seriousness, the item is to consider the certification of unopposed candidates and the order of cancellation for the election scheduled to be held on May 4th, 2019. Mr. Hibbs?
So I'm asked to read a motion that's basically going to displace me, so getting thrown out. I'm going to change the date until like June 27th, okay? Here we go. Now, in all seriousness, I'm happy to read this motion. "I move to accept the certification of unopposed candidates and as part of this motion that copies of this order be posted on Election Day at each polling place." That would have been used for, had the election had not been canceled, and approve the order declaring the election scheduled for May 4th, 2019 canceled, and that the unopposed candidates hereby be elected, and at that the unopposed elected candidates be sworn in following the official period for canvassing the May 4th, 2019 election.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. That was the motion. Is there a second for that motion?
Oh, well, second.
Okay, second by Ms. Walton. So, we have a motion to accept the certification of unopposed candidates, and in layman's terms for the public, because there are no contested elections in each of the places, for Place 4, which is David Willbanks, and Place 5, which is Justin Chappa, we have every legal opportunity to save our school district and taxpayers some money and the ability for us to remain focused as a governing body moving forward and don't have to have the election. So, that's essentially what that is. Is there any questions or discussion by trustees? All right. Seeing none, please vote. All trustees, vote in the affirmative. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Willbanks and Mr. Chappa. Very good. We will move now to items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items? We do have two items on the consent agenda. Any items to be considered separately? Okay. Seeing none, moving on then to consent. Ms. Powell, is there anything you need to share with us?
President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. On the consent this evening, there are two items. One is a utility easement that we need to grant to Encore so they can run power to the new construction academy, and the other is approving a T-Test appraiser.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion? I'll be willing to entertain a motion for consent. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Rice. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented by the administration.
Okay. Ms. Walton?
I will second that motion.
So, there's a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Walton to accept consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Consent carries. Moving on, the next item on our agenda, the discussion section, the first is the long-range financial planning for capital needs and general operating budget. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Rice. This evening, we bring long-range planning and capital needs discussion for your consideration. I'd like to start off by thanking the committee, the Capital Needs Committee, and their work. The staff, time, and work has been really tremendous, and we're at a very important part. We're options development, and I'll just have to say that the way this has been interdependent and really meeting the needs of students and really forecasting for a future that we know our students deserve and expect in terms of their instruction and learning. So with that, I'm going to invite Cindy Powell to give us this presentation, but also to lead us through some of this process, and you'll have other people presenting as well. So, Cindy?
First thing I'm going to do is... Podium a little higher. There we go. It's really hot tech. All right. Well, good evening again, Dr. Rice, board members, and Dr. Cavassos. The purpose of our presentation this evening is to update you on the work that we have been engaged in for quite some time now, literally over a year, in planning for both our long-range capital needs and our general operating budget. And both those things are interdependent. Dr. Cavassos referred just a moment ago even to the interdependency within just the bond in capital needs section itself, and I would take that a step further and say, you know, it's the two things, the general operating budget and our capital needs that we require to support the general operations of the district are very interdependent. So when we talk about our capital needs, part of our discussion has been that our needs may lead this board to a point of calling a bond election. As we talk about general operating budget, one of the considerations we have before us is potentially getting to a point of calling a tax ratification election. So these things are very important and warrant a significant amount of input from our community beyond just administration, and so we have been engaged in that. So, this evening, there will be several individuals who will speak. I'm going to introduce us into the capital needs piece of the work, and then Garah Hill and Jeannie DeKind, who are the two co-chairs of the Capital Needs Steering Committee, are going to come up and update you all on the progress of the Capital Needs Steering Committee work. Following those two ladies, then Ray Turco with Raymond Turco &amp; Associates will present findings from two different surveys that his firm has been contracted to perform on our behalf, and those survey results help inform our work. So he'll present the findings from those surveys. And then David Sturts with Cooperative Strategies will come and address our findings, the data we've gathered from the community dialogues we've held, and he will also discuss the options development process that he has led. David is with Cooperative Strategies. We engaged their firm to assist us in the process of facilitating the Capital Needs Steering Committee and doing the facility master planning work specifically that that committee assists us with. And then I'll come back up, and we'll have a brief discussion on our budget work. So like I said, there are several of us that will speak, and I think it probably makes sense to stop between each piece and see if you all have questions because there's a lot of material, a lot of varied material to cover. So that, I'm going to still raise the podium a little bit. All right, there we go. Much better. So, we're going to start with the capital needs piece, and then we'll move to the budget piece, but again, we're going to cover the options that we've developed to address the needs that have been identified, and that's, I think, the key thing that we want to convey to you all tonight, and then give you an update on the general operating budget and where we are in developing it. So as we have shared with you all before and had tremendous discussion around, we have a number of financial priorities, and we summarize them on this slide. It includes implementing our strategic plan, and that largely focuses around program offerings for our students, and also maintaining a healthy general fund budget is important for our economic and financial stability for many years, always going forward, something we have to be very mindful of. Competitive compensation is always a key part of our budget development every year, and then addressing our capital needs. And so that, we have to be very mindful that we are addressing capital needs on a routine, regular basis. If you don't, it becomes frankly, it's like your home in some cases, where you wind up with a lot of deferred needs that become very, very expensive to address. Also, we need to ensure that we have the appropriate facilities and appropriate capital assets and equipment to support our program offering. So that's a very key part of our planning work. And then always be mindful of our taxpayer and the impact that our decisions have on tax rates and on individual taxpayers. So, starting then with the capital needs portion of the presentation, again, this is a slide you've seen before that summarizes our capital priorities, that we focus our work around, our planning work around, making sure that we have adequate space to serve our students both today and into the future, and then making sure we have the right kinds of spaces to offer the particular programs that we want to offer, and to do it in a way that best supports student instruction and student achievement. Maintaining our buildings so that we protect our investment in our buildings, and making sure that our students have access to current technology and have access to program offerings. And that encompasses access via transportation to get them to and from programs. It involves equipment that students use with particular programs and the specific spaces that they need for programs. And so all those things roll into accessing programs and maintaining a level of excellence always in everything we do. So, we've been engaged for over a year. We spent over a year looking at our needs. We made sure that all of our assessment work aligned with the strategic plan, and if it didn't, then make the list, okay, of needs that we even, the preliminary list that we brought to you all. So, again, everything aligns with our strategic plan and focuses on our mission, which is to make sure that our students become contributing, responsible citizens striving for their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. And so that part right there, the relevant, the innovative, and the rigorous learning experiences are key to our work around assessing capital needs and addressing those capital needs. So based on the assessment that we conducted, we came before the board in October, and we shared with the board that we had identified needs in four broad categories. Facilities, fine arts, safety, security, and technology is a single bucket, and then transportation. And those needs that we identified totaled $1.2 billion. We explained to the board that those needs then would be prioritized over a period of time, and that some of those needs could be addressed a little further out, and a lot of them need to be addressed even within the next five years. Okay? So, just breaking that down a little further, in the facilities piece, a little over $1 billion there. That's obviously where the bulk of the total dollars are, and that includes new facilities, as we've heard, and we'll hear again tonight, talking about rebuilding some older schools, several older schools, and some new construction, along with the other big bucket there is condition and life cycle improvements. And you'll see some examples of those, but that's everything from upgrading restrooms and kitchens to HVAC upgrades and even pre-K spaces and gymnasiums at elementaries, and very basic needs in our athletics facilities, improvements to fine art spaces. So there's a variety of things that go into that, which is our largest category. In the safety, security, and technology category, those needs total $97 million. The focus there, the two big key pieces here are our infrastructure, being network infrastructure and security cameras in the infrastructure to support the security cameras, along with life cycle replacement of our equipment. We replace our technology on a five-year cycle, and so the needs assessment includes dollars to that, along with increasing access to technology across the district in a variety of programs and a variety of ways, including where appropriate one-to-one application of technology. In the fine arts area, visual and fine arts areas, our needs center around instruments and around theater equipment, making sure we have appropriate learning spaces for theater students in our theater program. Those are the key things there. And in terms of transportation, we have identified, again, needs to replace vehicles on our life cycle replacement schedule. We replace buses and other vehicles on a 12-year cycle. That's not a hard, fast rule. Some can go a little longer, some, several, have to be replaced a little prior to that, but 12 years is our planning mark. In this particular assessment, we identified needs for continuing that replacement cycle, along with needs to address programs, special program offerings, making sure, again, that access piece that we can get kids to and from our special programs. And then for the first time, we've included in this mix for transportation, needs to take care of some hazardous routes that are within that two-mile radius between a student's home and their school. We all know that the state pays for districts to transport students who live more than two miles outside of their, away from their home school, and they really don't even cover the entire cost. They only cover about 30% of that cost, but they do not fund any cost for routes within two miles of a campus. We know in a very urban setting that we have some places in town where students have to walk along extremely busy thoroughfares, and it creates some real risk for those students. And so we've taken that into account as we identified needs for buses. We've also identified needs for white fleet vehicles for maintenance and in security and other departments, along with purchasing some activity buses, again, making sure that we can very efficiently transport students to and from their home campuses and special programs like the Career Tech Center, the Ag Science Center, and other offerings to come. So that's a quick overview of the needs we reported to this board in October.
Are there any...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No, that's okay, if you want to...
I was just going to ask if there... We'll take a pause. Are there trustees that have questions on the 30,000-foot level at this point? No? You can come back later. Okay. I actually have one question regarding safety. Seeing that is something that will likely move through our legislative session, how will that impact what we have here that we're addressing and what, will there be a level of priority on what things we would fund through that hopeful funding from the state versus our bond?
Okay. So, on the area of security, today, I believe it was, it's Senate Bill 11 was actually filed that is Larry Taylor's School Security Bill, Safety and Security Bill. That has just been filed. I have not seen the details of it, but that is one that we have anticipated would come, and we'll have to review and see what kinds of funding it might offer and how those funds might be delivered to schools. Certainly, if there's an opportunity for the state to pay for infrastructure, then that we've already... we've already identified as a need, we'll certainly look to see if we have the opportunity to use that funding for these needs. If it particular, if it potentially gives us an opportunity to fund something else or maybe requires that we focus on something else, we'll do that. I think some of that funding will be around infrastructure. I think some of that may also be around mental health. And so that will be more of a, of an operating budget piece that we can work in.
Absolutely. And we do have a, a couple of lights here.
Hey, Dr. Reich, are we wanting to get to the granular right now or are we still there?
Yeah, no, no, we'll, we'll definitely do it on the rest of this presentation. This is definitely the high level. So I would say that if, if you want to ask a question now, that's fine, but with what Mr. Hogg stated, if you want to continue to defer to later on in the presentation, that's welcome.
I was just flipping through and I think that this is probably the best place for me to ask the questions that I've got at the moment instead of coming back through, really fit in. Ms. Powell, on slide 10, looking at the safety, security, technology needs summary. On the tech forward grants, can you just give me kind of a brief explanation of how that grant program works?
I think I'll, I'll ask Mr. Brand to kind, I think he can probably articulate that better than I can.
So the TI grant process, the way that works is we, we have a period of, we open up a window of opportunity for our teachers to submit grants based upon a, they have to attend certain number of meetings, they have to meet certain criteria as a part of the grant process to be, to be reviewed. We have a divine, defined rubric that's a part of that process. And out of that, review, analysis, after all the grants have been submitted, we score them. And so just because they scored a certain level doesn't necessarily mean that we will award a grant level. Obviously, they have to meet what we feel is in alignment with our goals and objectives as a district, as well as meeting all of the national standards as it relates to technology. So once we've identified those, we will award those up to roughly a million dollars a year because we put in a total of $5 million in the current bond package. So we do 1 million per year for five years. We haven't always spent the full million. We won't spend it just to spend it. So again, it has to be in alignment with what our goals and objectives are and meet that high level that we're looking for based upon that met, that rubric that's been developed as a part of that process.
Okay. And so if you, if you've been allocating about a million dollars a year, but you haven't always reached it, what is the approximate amount that you have been hitting?
It's pretty close to a million. There has been a year where we've given just slightly over. It was kind of a balance. It's pretty close.
And is that just kind of where the, the aggregate?
It is.
Amount requested happens to land or is that sort of the, you're turning people away?
We, not all get awarded. We are happy to say that each year we've been able to award more each year just because of the types of grants that are awarded. As, as we have worked with them more directly, they've become more knowledgeable about the process and the types of things that we're looking for across the system. That's really streamlined the process and so we've been able to award a little bit more each year over, over the course of that. But yes, not everybody gets, gets a TI grant award.
And what's your sense of the ones that you, that you don't get to, you don't give a grant to? What's your sense of those that are sort of meritorious versus those that even if we had more money, we probably wouldn't give them money?
Oh, gosh, that's hard without, I guess, doing a, a full analysis of that, but there are some where you have to make some tough decisions about the type of impact it's having, the ability to, of course, the readiness of the individuals that are receiving those awards. A lot of it has to do with that because they might have a grand idea, but they maybe can't sustain it. The monitoring may not be there or just from knowing that individual and what they're doing in regards to learning within the classroom. We know that they're not ready potentially to do that at a high level. So there's a lot of factors that kind of play into that to really answer that. They could be on the bubble, but if we feel they have, they have the capacity to be able to handle that and do that in an ongoing way and sustain it, then we're more likely to try to find a way to award that grant than not.
Okay. And I'm glad you brought up sustainability and monitoring because that, that's my next question is what mechanisms do you have in place to monitor a grant implementation once you give out the money?
Sure. So obviously from an instructional technology perspective, a lot of that is walkthroughs, data collection. It's also, they have to document specifically how they're going to analyze that and provide us data back to where we could do our very best to, to see what kind of growth might exist in regards to student learning. We also use our Bright Bites data points that we, that we have all of our teachers and our students do a self-assessment of, of their areas of increase in technology skills. We also use that data point to help us target staff development that we think is, are, are areas in which we need to target to help grow them as individuals. So it's kind of a collection of data walkthroughs, self-reporting of information from teachers as well as administrators on that, in that regards. Some of those custom areas of those grants are a little bit more difficult to monitor and assess, but, but, you know, ongoing conversations, walkthroughs, monitoring, and, and the collection of data the best we can. We evaluate that in an ongoing way to help us understand what kind of an impact that might have.
So if you had a situation, or you can explain how you would deal with a situation if it happened yet, where you had a teacher, a group of teachers who applied for a TI grant, they got a grant, but then maybe the people spearheading that program, you know, they're only at the campus another year or two, what happens to the tech obtained with the TI grant at that point?
You know, that's an interesting question. We, we oftentimes have teachers that change locations or move to a different campus. And so if they are the ones that have spearheaded that effort, we do our very best to honor that and let that move with them to their new location because they are the ones that were a part of that process. And so it's, it can get a little hairy sometimes, but we do our best to simply do just that. Those that have really were a part of that grant opportunity, we do our best to carry that with them to their new location.
Okay. And is there some component of the TI grant that is expected, like an expected teacher contribution? Or when you decide after you have vetted a grant application and you've fully vetted it, you're approving that grant? Or is it a situation where you've approved the grant, but there still might, you're only funding, you know, 80 or 90% of it?
We've done both. So we can do it, we can fully fund it or we've done partials. So there has been that instance where that's the case as well. And some of that can be budgetary related. Some of that could be from just the assessment that we feel this is what's best at that given time. We have follow-up conversations with those individuals. We help those that don't receive grants. We have reflective conversations with them to help them understand maybe why. What, what was lacking and what were the gaps that might have existed within a grant where they might not have got, got one? So we always encourage individuals to have that conversation so next time they might be able to get a full award or next time they might be able to get a partial award. Other pieces of that I think is important to note is a large piece of that process is to create leaders, you know, because we want to grow technology across the system. And so we want them to be technology teacher models that we can then leverage for other teachers. So the more we grow capacity within a, a particular facility, the better off we are because we have other ones that can assist helping to understand teachers what that could look like within student learning. So that's a big piece of that grant process as well. So yes, we've done full grants, we've done partial awards.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have on that.
Okay.
And I have one question on slide 11. I was just looking through here and the, the fine arts, the visual and fine arts needs is, you know, are pretty small in comparison to what we're looking at. And this is a pretty well-put-together list, but I noticed on theater equipment, we mentioned junior highs and high schools specifically. Is there anything anticipated to be, a need anticipated for elementary school sound systems? No, I've been to a few, it seems like the elementary school, the sophistication of the programming that they're putting on has, has gone up and it seems like there's a, I've been to a few where the, the sound system, it seems like it's struggling a little bit to fill up that cafeteria.
There is, and we've actually had discussion around that again just today. I think I'd like Dr. Anderson to address that, but yes, there is an identified need for elementaries.
Ms. Powell, is that something that's going to be covered going forward or wouldn't it be the times with Dr. Anderson?
In terms of the, this kind of need, there's some of the, the details at the, the level that Mr. Chopp has asked that we don't have in this presentation. This was a lot about process.
Right.
And about options to address needs. We can certainly pull up, and I don't, I don't have it to pull up at the moment, but more of those details were in the presentation we made in October. And we can, we can certainly share that again with you all.
Okay. And I'm just, I'm asking in the interest of time if, if we could make sure that we're asking questions at the appropriate interval or point during this evening and try to stay focused on what the intent of this presentation is, which is the, the process, what, what the needs are. And I would encourage my colleagues to be mindful of that so that if we, if we can, please defer more, more deep dives for either offline or as a suggestion for another topic at a different time, if that's okay. Okay. So did, did you want to hear that now or do you want to defer?
No, that, that was the level of my question was just whether or not that has been identified need because we've gone on here drill team uniforms, which is only $144,000, but I imagine with 53 elementary school campuses, you know, adding some sound equipment would be in that ballpark or more. And I just didn't see it listed, so that was my question. And then I also just didn't see a spot in the rest of the presentation where fine arts was going to be addressed at this level.
Right. And, and so again, the, the intent of the presentation tonight is around the, the process and where we are in the process and options that we have developed to address really a lot of the programmatic pieces. And, and so that's going to be the focus of, of the discussion this evening.
Okay, very good. And we will have opportunity, because this, we're early in this process, to, to take deeper dives. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Choppa. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Just kind of a similar question to yours only relating to transportation. Has the Texas Legislature advanced any bills addressing the, increasing the allotment for transportation costs?
Not yet.
We have till Friday, right?
Tomorrow. We understand that the school finance bill that we've all been waiting for will be filed and there may be something in that that addresses the transportation piece.
And is the 30% of the bus cost, is that a state figure or is that a figure for us or?
That, that is specific to us and I think it's pretty much the same case across the state. And it, the chapter 41 districts don't get transportation cost even. So there are some districts that recognize even less than that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Reich. And Ms. Walton, I always like to say this and Ms. Powell always knows, 1984 was the last time our transportation funding was adjusted.
I've never heard you say that, Mr. Hogg.
I was six, I was six when they adjusted that at the time. It is, and there is, some rural districts do receive some excess funding for larger geographic areas, some things of that, but Ms. Walton, that is a coverage. And I commend this board. We off, we talk about choice options in our district, but I, we all say many a times, you're not offering choice if you're not offering transportation. You're just offering choice to select a group if that's all you're doing. So I commend this board for always covering those costs. Ms. Powell, I'm not looking for an exact answer now. I would like a staff to take a little deeper dive into transportation and attendance rate correlation because I know the more attendance rate comes up, I can't fathom having a, one of my daughters possibly walk like 1.9 miles to a school. And then you start talking to schools and you see on rainy days or cold days like we have today, what that attendance rate drops down to. I'd also like to see also on that what the correlation, our on-time rate for athletics and fine arts and extracurricular activities, what that comes down to. My own personal opinion, just taking a personal opinion, I feel like we're a little understaffed on buses. Ms. Powell, we don't have any, how much do we have built into our current budget? Do we have some built in? I'm looking for an exact number. Do we have some replacement built into our current budget for transportation needs?
Current general operating budget? No.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And I thought we'd moved it all to bond elections, so we're hinging, living, and dying on that. Let me ask also on band and the visual and fine arts, if there's any additions that come in? That's not counting, that total number's not counting any additions or anything we're adding from a facility standpoint.
Correct. Anything relating to facilities, specific to fine arts is in the facilities section.
I just want to make sure because when you start looking at total fine arts spend, it can be more if you're adding facilities, things of that, that nature. Let's all have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. We'll move on.
Okay. All right. So based on the report that we brought the board in October, the board determined that there was sufficient need to seat a capital need steering committee to study those needs further and bring back a recommendation to this board in, in regards to what our prioritized capital needs are. So the board appointed a committee, 37 people, and that committee has been charged with looking at these needs and prioritizing the needs we have through the year 2025 specifically and bringing back a recommendation to the board. So there are 37 people on the committee. The committee work is facilitated by cooperative strategies and in particular David Sturts, who you will hear from in just a, a few minutes. So this slide shows the, basically the, the timeline and the work itself of the capital need steering committee. So we have with us here this evening our two co-chairs, Gera Hill and Jeannie DeKind. And I've asked them to come and share with you all a little bit about the process itself and even their perspectives on, on the process and where we are. So with that, I'll ask them to step to the mic.
We just want to move the, we just want to move the podium.
Welcome. Oh, yes, please adjust it. It needs to be. And just to highlight for those that may be watching, that is a product of our 2014 bond at work.
Nice. I don't think we knew that it was adjustable until this evening, but it works very well. President Reich, members of the school board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much for allowing Gera and me to present to you this evening. And more so, thank you for appointing and entrusting us with the leadership of this capital steering, capital need steering committee. In our short time together, it is clear that you all have appointed 37 individuals with diverse experiences and perspectives to represent the parents, staff, students, and community members of our district. And we do actually have at least one of them here this evening. You want to stand? We have a very dedicated group. This input is critical to developing a plan that is informed by, understood, and supported by the community, especially as our district continues to transform to meet the challenges and the opportunities of an evolving public school environment. The capital need steering committee's role in providing input during this process is generally represented here on these slides by the blue dots. To date, we have held two steering committee meetings with the next scheduled for March 19th, as well as associated subcommittee meetings for safety, security, and technology, fine arts, and transportation. We plan to wrap up those subcommittee meetings by March 19th as well. Additionally, steering committee members assisted with small group facilitation during the community dialogues, which are represented by the, the big black circles. And Gera and I participated on behalf of the steering committee during day two of options development last week. As we continue to support this process, the steering committee will review and provide feedback to initial options, assist in facilitating with the second iteration of the community dialogues, and review and provide feedback on final recommendations before we make our final presentation to the board in June.
Although it is sometimes clear that everyone on the committee has a unique lens in which they view the task at hand, it has also been very clear to us that each and every one of us are truly there to benefit all 60,000-plus students in the district. During our time together so far, we've also had the opportunity to hear from many district stakeholders through background, background reports, questionnaires, and meetings as they provide information, coupled with real experiences as we navigate through the data gathering phase of this process. It is apparent that the background report data being provided is not some extravagant wish list, but rather a well-thought-out and comprehensively derived assessment of actual capital and programmatic needs for our district. We wish that it was feasible to make every ask a reality, but rest assured that we are doing our best. ask a reality, but rest assured that we are doing our best to look at ways to address as much as possible with a responsibly sized proposal to be presented for you for your consideration. We applaud the district's efforts in not only seeking the input from our committee, but also to the many ways that the district is facilitating opportunities for all AISD stakeholders to have a voice in this process.
I guess that's the end of your part. Well, let's see if you get away without a question here. I think you're going to be asked a question just, just to do that. Mr. Hibbs?
Ms. Hill, don't go away from the microphone, please.
No, there really is a question.
There is a question. Trying to get out of here quickly, aren't you? In all seriousness, thank you very much. Thank you. And the committee members are ready in the extra work that each one of you are going to, because we know that you've been to several of the different community meetings and such. As I told you when you were going in, from our committee's standpoint, we, we entrust you, and we, or we put this committee really in your hands to be able to give us feedback, give us thought on the recommendations, the assessments that have been put forth, and, and really tell us what, you know, you feel from your heart. And that's what we, I welcome the diverse opinions of your committee, and I know they are vast. And the very same thing, one thing I would, I think we'd be derelict in not doing is right here, as we're still early in the process, is there anything that, within your charge, any concerns, anything that we as a board could be offering to provide more guidance, more assistance to you as a committee and as chairs?
I don't think we could ask for better staff that are walking alongside this, Cindy and David. And everyone has been really great in not only preparing us, but preparing the committee for what, what our expectations are, what we're looking to accomplish each time we get together.
And I think you mentioned the diverse perspectives. I think that brings with it a large amount of requests for information. And the staff has definitely been able to handle and manage those so far. So they've provided a lot of detailed information to the, the different questions that have been asked through the course of our meetings and subcommittee meetings.
Is, is your committee being able to funnel those through you and then taking those into the, you, you being able then to turn it over to staff?
Yes. And I think, you know, themes emerge in the questions. And so we're able to address a lot of them that way.
Good.
But, you know, there are some specific interests that we handle as a one-off as well, and they've been able to respond to those questions.
Okay, that's, that's what I had hoped for, and I know as a board, we had hoped for. So, you know, we just applaud you for your effort so far. We encourage you, and we want to be your biggest cheerleaders to continue forward with this. And then ultimately be able to take something that you feel was a good consensus from your committee as you bring us those further recommendations down the line. So again, I appreciate you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. I, I don't see other, any other lights indicating questions. I, I will formally say thank you both very much for your leadership of this committee. As Mr. Hibbs stated and alluded to, you have a very diverse representation of our community. And to, to lead that effectively is not a small order by any means. So thank you very much for what you're doing. It, it is vastly important work that, that you're, you're doing. And Ms. Gavigan, thank you for being here. As one of the committee members, you are all in. I appreciate that, as well as all of the other committee members. It, it is an extraordinary lift with lots of information, lots of data, and lots of analysis that, that you're having to endure quite literally. Thank you for that. It's tremendously beneficial to hear this information back from you as we go through this process, to be the best stewards of our community's dollars and, and assets as much as possible. So thank you very much for being here and in advance for the work to come.
All right. So as I mentioned earlier, the district contracted Raymond Turco and Associates to conduct two surveys relating to our capital needs awareness or bond awareness and a potential tax ratification election. And we've used Raymond Turco and Associates a number of times in the past as we have prepared for bond elections and have always found the, the data that he provides back to us from these surveys to be very informative and help us shape our choices, our decisions. And so we very much appreciate that and that track record we have with him. So at this point, I'm going to ask Ray Turco to come, and he's going to go through the results of the two, two surveys he conducted. One was a community survey of likely voters. And it was a statistically valid sampling of, of individuals. And the other is an online employee survey made available to all AISD employees. So.
Good evening, Mr. Turco.
Thank you. I'm not going to push it up. I think I'm, it's about the right height for me. Everybody else has been doing, going it up and down. I'm just going to stay where it is right now.
As long as you know where the button is, just in case.
I do know where the button is, and I don't think I'm going to go down like this or anything like that. Dr. Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, thank you again for allowing Raymond Turco and Associates to have the opportunity to sample voters in the district, to sample employees in the district, to provide information to the board, as well as the committee, relative to what the opinions of people are relative to this issue being considered. I'm going to go through the methodology of the survey, the findings of the survey. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I'm able to. You will also get a brief board summary that was given today. It has not been reviewed yet, as well as a more comprehensive survey. And if you, you know, choose to look at numbers, there is both a tabulation report for the bond survey, for the voter survey, as well as the employee survey. So there's a lot of information that people will have an opportunity to review. Let's talk about the survey methodology for the bond survey of voters. We did 404 randomly selected voting households with telephone numbers. Okay? We did not talk to people, we had some cell phone numbers, not as many as you might like, but we had a voter, a voter base of 19,000 households. So we thought that was an adequate number to meet that, the needs of this group. Most of the people who vote in elections tend to be older, tend to not have kids in school. So we felt confident that we were going to get a, a good sample in terms of opinions. And again, we're using the same methodology that we have used since 1984, after the last bond election that ever failed in Arlington did not pass. So we've used the same methodology. When you have a survey of 400 people, it's plus or minus 5% and a 95% confidence level. What that means is generally when we ask a question, you'll have four responses. You'll have very satisfied or strongly support. So a very positive, intense positive response, an intense negative response, a general positive and a general negative. So I am 95% sure that if we say, how strongly do you support something? And if we add the two positive numbers and we get 60%, then I'm 95% sure that it's either going to be 65% or 55%. So there's just a little bit of a split. So we also, what we did is we focused again on, on households with voting history. And what we did is we divided the school district into the primary attendant zone networks. Okay? And what we did is we assigned each household a district number so that what we had was a statistically valid sampling. In other words, we didn't take six districts and say, 400 divided by six, and everybody's going to take, you know, 60 surveys. For example, in the Sagin network, only 5% of the registered voting households live there. So only 5% of the surveys were completed there. In Martin, it's 25%. In Arlington, it's 21%. So we sampled, so everybody got the opportunity. Nobody was oversampled. Nobody was undersampled. Okay? So we get a true picture. We had to make 36,000, almost 37,000 attempts in order to complete the 400 surveys. And then the field work took place in January. We talk about the profile. Who did we talk to? 10% of the sample was under the age of 45. 75% were over the age of 55, and 47% were over 65 years old. 11% had lived in the district for under 10 years. 79% had lived in the district for over 16 years. 42% had children in AISD schools or had graduated in the past five years. 64% did not have kids in school, 4% in private or a charter school. And then if you look at grade level, 11 at the elementary level, 4% at the junior high, and 7% at the senior high. What's shown, not shown in this slide, is we took the numbers from the previous survey to see how they set back. And they hold up pretty similar in terms of the demographic percentages that we showed here. So I felt good in terms of, in terms of providing you this information. Talk about the employees that we surveyed. Now, the employee survey was an online survey. So each employee was given a link, an individual link. We didn't say all employees, you know, employees were not allowed to participate multiple times. They only had one person. So he said, you can't send it to somebody else so that they can participate in the survey. So it was only one individual. 3,214 employees participated, which is a participation rate of about 38%. If you were looking at this from a statistically valid standpoint, you're looking at plus or minus 2%. Now, an online survey, a self-administered survey does not have the same statistical reliability as a telephone survey. But when you've got 38% of your people participating, I think that's a pretty good number. Now, one thing you do have to pay attention, as you look into some of these numbers, is we sampled all employees. All employees were in, were eligible to participate, but not all employees live in the district, and not all employees vote in the district. Okay? So for example, we did do the survey similar to the telephone survey. We translated into Spanish for Spanish participants, and we had about 50 people participate in the Span, using the Spanish survey. And we were in the field from the end of January to about the middle of February. 59% of the people who answered the survey said they lived in the district. And we broke that down. 22% had voted in a city or school district election. Okay? 22% were registered to vote but did not. And the 56% live outside the district or are not registered. So some of the times you see some of the percentages, they are going to be everybody, not broken down as voters. We have that information, but in terms of this presentation, we did not include it. Okay? But the numbers of people who voted in this, in, back in 2014 in that bond election, was much more significant than had voted in the bond election previous to that one. So we got a lot better participation in the last election, and, and hopefully that, that trend can continue. One of the first questions we said is how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with the quality of public schools in your area? You'll note that 21% said they were very satisfied, 36% satisfied. So we're looking at about a 57%. Okay? In terms of dissatisfaction, 22% and 12% were very dissatisfied. So when we look at a ratio, we're looking at nearly about a two to one, in terms of it, everybody we go talk to, two of them are going to give us a positive response before somebody gives us a negative response. You'll look at the intensity rating. We're much greater in terms of the very satisfied response. And that's always a much better rent reading. In fact, our very satisfied responses were greater this year than they were back in 2014 when we did the bond election. Then what we said is we wanted to talk about thresholds. Okay? Let me explain my definition of how I determine what a threshold is. I'm going to give you a number, and you tell me at what point you become unlikely to vote for something. Not likely. So in other words, I'm not looking for when the likely response dips below 50%. I'm looking for the point that the unlikely response exceeds 50%. Because those are the people that say, okay, that's too much money, even though I haven't given them any, any information. All we said, for example, in this particular one, was threshold, facility maintenance. We won, one thing we did say is that it could exceed the cost of the bond election that was approved back in 2014. But we did not give any specifics. You can't get through in this particular point. And that's another way, because the threshold's going to change if we say it's going to be for this, 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 and this. Okay? Like, a lot of people are going to go to the polls, and they're going to vote just based simply on a number. So if you look at it, under 700 million, yes, 59% said they would likely vote for it. 32% said they would be unlikely. The orange percentages are the employees. So where voters had 59, employees had 60. So they were pretty close. At 700 to 800 million, we were at 48 to 43. It's at the 800 to 900 million dollars, the point at 55% said they would be unlikely to vote for it, based simply on the amount. You note the employees were willing to spend more money. Okay? They were up, they would be up to a billion dollars. If we look at some of the subsets, you'll see if you said you were a strong supporter of the bond election, you were willing to support any amount at this particular point. Because even at the amount we gave them, over a billion dollars, they said, yes, we're in. If you look at our general supporters, which we call a soft support, they were at the 800, 900 million dollar figure. If you were an opponent, the very first number we started with, they said, no, we are unlikely to vote for something. So as the progression continues, you're going to note that you're going to get people who obviously are going to be against it from the beginning. Okay? At any, at any level. We look at undecided voters. Undecided voters said they would be at the 800 to 900 range. Parents, they would support up to a billion. Non-parents, 890 billion, 90 million, excuse me. Campus-based employees and non-campus-based employees are in that billion-dollar figure. So right off the bat, when we started a higher amount, they are supportive of that amount. Then what we did is we looked at construction and renovation. And you'll note our threshold amongst voters is at 300 to 400 million dollars. You'll note that there is no highlighted number among employees, because employees were very positive about construction. They said, when we are over 500 million, we're only at 44% unlikely. And we look at our different groups, strong supporters, again, over 500 million dollars. Supporters, 400 to 500 million dollars. Opponents, no, no amount. They are not likely to vote for it. Our campus-based employees at 45%, and our non-campus-based employees at 37%. So they never got close to that 50% unlikely mark. We went to safety, security, and technology. At safety, security, and technology, at 200 million dollars was the point that we reached our threshold, at 53%. Again, with employees, they were willing to support more than that. But now you do need, we need to note that a significant portion of those people don't live in the district. And oftentimes, when we've done city surveys, the people who don't vote are much more willing to spend money than people who don't vote. But we did get, when we did this support, we got significant support amongst our voters as well. So then what we did is we said, okay, if there was an election today, how strongly would you support or oppose in a bond election of approximately 1 billion to reach the four, the four primary areas? Okay? In our first test, what we call a pre-test, because again, we have not presented any specific information at this point. 26% said they would strongly support, 32% they would support for 58%. So at this particular point, at approximately a billion dollars, a majority of people would approve the election. Our opposition- Our opposition was at thirty-five percent. Fourteen percent intensely opposed. So you're about a two to one from your strong support in terms of your intense attitudes. So those people most committed, most enthusiastic, most passionate about this position are more positive than they are negative. In terms of our undecided, six percent, a very low undecided at this particular point. So they're more set in what they wanna do. Our employees were at fifty-nine percent, at twenty-one percent opposition. They were much more likely to be undecided, but that's not hard to believe, because a significant portion don't live in the district anyway, and so they would not feel comfortable in terms of, of saying, giving a position. So we're at a one-point-seven ratio, uh, and a two-point-eight ratio in terms of employees. And in two thousand and thirteen, when we did the bond survey, this question, we were only at forty-eight percent amongst voters. So again, we are, the district is in a better situation in terms of voters being aware and voters being supportive. We look at some of the various variables, what we call subset ratios. Our strong supporters, ninety-three percent for. Our supporters, seventy-six percent before. Our opponents, eighty-eight percent opposed. Our undecided voters, they split more towards the negative at this point. Fourteen to fifty-nine percent, twenty-nine percent with a significant portion undecided. Our parents are at seventy-four percent support. Parents of graduates at sixty-three percent support. Non-parents at fifty-four percent support. So even those people who aren't influenced by what occurs in schools, people who are only influenced by what they read in newspapers and that sort of thing, they're in it at this particular point. Our campus-based employees, fifty-nine percent support. Sixty-four percent for non-campus-based support. Employees who live in the district, sixty-three percent support. Then what we did is we gave them, uh, eight recommendations of possible items that might be constructed, and, and asked them to say how strongly they would support or oppose these. The number one item was renovations and improvements at all schools. You'll see that seventy-seven percent were supportive, twenty-one percent were opposed. They were, uh, supportive of construction of the new junior high school to replace Carter, as well as the two elementary schools to replace Web and Thornton. And then to construct the gymnasiums that would, uh, serve as safe shelters at elementary schools and replace what they currently have. Those were the top four items, and you'll see they're at seventy-six percent down to sixty-nine percent. So you're better than two out of three to three out of four people who would support that. Our lower-tier items, remodeling and renovating all junior high and high school campuses to provide updated programs, STEM equipment, fine arts, and athletics, sixty-nine percent. So it's hard to say that it's a lower tier. It's just that you've got eight items, so you gotta have a top and a bottom. So, and from a slide perspective, constructing one or two pre-kindergarten centers at sixty-eight and sixty-eight percent. Replacing the sixty-year-old service center at sixty-three and sixty-two percent. Upgrading Wylliman and Cravens Football Stadium was the only item that was not supported. Uh, but you know now going in, that that's, that it's not the most popular item that people look at. So they don't know anything. I mean, prior to the meeting, I was sitting in conference room A, and some of the gentlemen were talking about Wylliman and how they look at six-man football tournaments, because the locker rooms can only fit six people. And if they have a seventh person, they can't get in it. These are things that people probably don't know. So you know going in that there's informational opportunities and that sort of thing. Then what we did is we said, okay, let's give you some information. Would you be likely or unlikely to vote for this election based on this type of information? If approved, this bond election will have an impact on every single student in the district. That was the number-one statement that got people excited about the bond election. Because of good financial planning, the tax increase to pay for a bond package this large would be minor. The district successfully managed a voter-approved bond program five years ago. That was not as important as some of the other items. And as campaigns go, as information and that sort of thing, it's, it's good to tell people a few things, but not to try to tell people too many things. And you'll see later on in the slide where we perhaps tried to tell too many people, too many things to people, didn't help us. The district would be able to offer full pre-K. Most of the funds proposed would go to build new schools, classroom additions, and to improve existing schools. Note in this particular, the bottom one on that line, the difference between voters and staff. Much more, staff members were much more enthusiastic about the new school construction items. After we'd given them some of this information, talked about some of the potential improvements, we asked again, how strongly would you support or oppose a bond election of approximately one billion dollars? We call this the post-test, because we've given them some information. We like to see how the positions change. Strong support, support totaled sixty-five percent. So we went up from fifty-eight to sixty-five. We gained seven points just by giving them the information, uh, that we did. Amongst employees, we went to, from fifty-nine percent to sixty-four percent. So we improved there also. So I feel good in terms of the information being given, uh, the voters being educated so that they can make their decisions and being able to move forward. If we look again, seven percent voters overall, parents improved seven percent, parents of graduates improved seven percent. Employees overall went up, uh, both campus-based and non-campus-based people went up. So it all looked very positive from the bond perspective. Then what we did is we talked about the T R E election. And we attempted to explain how it was funded. That it mostly went to operating expenses, that oftentimes other school districts are in the same plight where there's not enough money. The district is not getting the same types of funding. So one of the options is to shift the tax rates. After we had explained that information, and everybody was explained the exact same way, we said, how strongly would you support or oppose an election to change the M and O tax rate to a dollar seventeen cents, and then to reduce the I N S tax rate? We did not give an amount of the reduction of the I N S tax rate, 'cause that's not available at this particular point. This time, we got sixty-five percent support. So we did better than the bond election in terms of support. Amongst employees, again, sixty-five percent support. Support ratios of double, two to one, and five to none, five to one amongst employees. We look at our ratios again. We're still not getting a much, much from opponents, but we got more support from opponents this time than we did for the bond election. Little bit more, not a lot, but a little bit more. Our parents are at six to one in terms of their support. Our non-parents, there's a lot of difference between, uh, the ratios amongst those two groups. Lot different than it was in the bond, in the bond campaign. Employees who live in the district are at sixty-six percent. Non-campus at seventy-one percent, and campus-based employees at sixty-four percent. Then what we did is we gave them again, information as best we could. The new revenue would be used to fund future teacher pay raises, so the district can continue to recruit and retain its teachers. That was the item that was most important, that generated the most, the highest likely comment amongst both, uh, voters as well as staff. At the voters, we were at four to one, staff was at eleven to one. Because of good financial planning, the district can reduce the tax rate for paying off its debt and still finance a new bond program. Sixty-six percent and sixty-three percent. An anticipated reduction in the tax rate used to pay off bonds will compensate for the increased M and O tax rate. And the new revenue would be used to fund full-day pre-K and other specialized programs, uh, expansion. Now, then we looked at ones that were not as influential. Funds raised from higher property values results in lower funding from the state. That was either not something that was likely to influence somebody, or it was something that was more confusing to them. Okay? If the tax rate increases is, increase is not approved by voters, some programs and staffing levels might have to be reduced. Many other school districts in the state have sought voter approval to raise the M and O tax rate above one point, one dollar and four cents. Again, it got interest, but not as much as some of the other ones, especially the teacher raises. The state used to provide fifty percent of its operating budget, but now only provides approximately forty percent, which the district must make up. Again, some of these items generated likely opinions, but we should pick and choose which ones we use, rather than attempt to, to use them all. Because this time, when we again asked them the question, where the pre-test, we were at sixty-five percent, the strong support and support was at sixty-one percent. So it declined. So that means the information we gave them either caused them to reconsider their position, or else they just thought, well, maybe we need to look at this a little bit differently. Our employees went from sixty-five to sixty-one percent also. Now, on one hand, sixty-one percent is very significant, when you only need fifty-point-one. But you would like to be able to come back. If we picked up seven points in a bonds, in the bond issues, you'd like that sixty-one percent or sixty-five percent to be upwards of seventy. You'd like that gain. We didn't get that gain. So... If we look at our subsets, generally went down. Non-parents went down a little bit more than the other people, and non-campus-based employees went down a little bit more. Then we talked about seniors, anybody who was over the age of sixty-five. We said, well, if you don't improve your home, your taxes are, will be frozen. Even if the bond election is passed, your taxes won't go up anymore. How likely or unlikely would you be to vote for the bond election? Sixty-two percent of the seniors said that they would likely vote for it, based on that information. We didn't include the employees in the sample, because very few employees are over the age of sixty-five, and, and a good percentage of those live outside the district also. So in summation, nearly three of five voters are satisfied with the quality of education. Employees in general are more than three times more positive, although there's not a lot of enthusiasm among employees. The way I say that is where our voters were twenty-six percent enthusiastic, very satisfied. Employees were only ten percent very satisfied. But this is the same numbers that we had back in two thousand and thirteen, when we did the survey prior to that. So there is something going through their minds relative to enthusiastic response. Not that they're dissatisfied, they're just not as passionate as you might like them to be. Uh, sixty-four percent of them did not have kids in school. Bond package thresholds would be as follows: eight hundred to nine hundred million for maintenance and life cycle improvements, three hundred to four hundred million for construction and renovation, and a hundred and fifty to two hundred million for safety, security, and technology. You add 'em all up, it says one-point-two-five to one-point-five-billion-dollar threshold. Just looking at those numbers. It's the higher, they're higher among the supporters and their parents, lower among opponents and non-parents, and employee thresholds are higher. Pre-test support versus opposition, fifty-eight to thirty-five, with only six percent undecided. Pre-test in night, two thousand and thirteen was forty-eight to thirty-two. District employees were supportive at fifty-nine to twenty-one versus eighty-five to thirteen in two thousand and thirteen. Most supportive of the renovations and improvements at all schools, construction of the new junior high and elementary schools. They were least supportive of updating of the football stadiums. They are most influenced to support, because the bond election will have an impact on every student, and tax increase is minor because of good financial planning. Employees were most influenced by the funds going to build or improve schools. Then the information on the bonds provided a positive impact on voters, approved. The T R E pre-test support versus opposition was sixty-five to twenty-nine. Most influential statements were the new revenue would be used to fund teacher pay raises, and the district can reduce the tax rate and still finance new bond programs. But the information provided prior to the post-test had a negative influence, as support declined amongst both groups. With that, I would be more than happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Turco. I'm sure we'll have questions. Let me get my screen there. Um, are there trustees that have questions at this point? I knew we would. Thank you for the information, very comprehensive, and, uh, we'll look at it in a little bit more detail here. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Reich. Thank you for the report. Um, just a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned when you were first, um, starting off your presentation, um, that y'all pretty much are still using the same, uh, I guess, procedures that you did since nineteen eighty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, um, would that mean that if your normal practice was calling household phones, um, you didn't maybe increase or find out, like, numbers of cell phones? Like, if the timing has changed, where most people don't answer their home phones anymore, and one of them, um, any changes with that thought?
Well, one of the, relative to making telephone calls, you'll note that we had thirty-seven thousand attempts in order to complete our four hundred calls.
Right.
Back when we did this a long time ago, we might only need four thousand attempts. So part of that has changed in that area. The lists that we purchase include cellphone numbers. That's been a recent addition. Because in the past, while we are exempt from do-not-call lists, oftentimes cellphone companies don't sell their cellphone numbers, and so we're not able to use those, or, or it's cost, uh, it's not cost-effective in order to random-digit dial cell numbers to see whether or not there is a cellphone number, and it works and everything else. But there are some companies that have incorporated cellphone numbers, and, and we've used cellphone numbers in this project. But it does take oftentimes, uh, difficult to complete all the calls.
Okay.
But in order to maintain the statistical reliability, you, you can't, you have to do it in that particular manner.
Making noted changes of a four thousand attempts versus thirty-six thousand attempts. Okay. Um, and then, um, on the employee respondent profile, um, I think you were saying that out of your population, fifty-nine percent, uh, lived within the district. So, um, for the other forty-one percent that did not, you continued to ask them the same questions as you asked the ones that were residents? Or did you move forward with only the ones that lived in the district?
No, all, all employees who responded to the survey were allowed to answer all the questions.
Okay. Yeah. So, how much, and I'm asking 'cause I truly don't know, but how much do you think that adds to the plus or minus two, uh, the answers being answered for what we're really looking for, for those voters who can vote?
Wait, are you talking employees, or are you talking voters?
Uh, well, really both, but I was looking at the employee ones. So if we're...
If you're looking at, if you're looking at the employee ones,
Mm-hmm.
The... The tape, the tabulation report does include the opinions of, broken down by whether or not you are an employee of the district, or, excuse me, you are a district resident versus a non-district resident. The tabulations also include those people who have a history of voting versus those who did not vote, and those who live outside the district. We wanted to present just the cumulative results at this point. If you're asking me whether or not the, a, a self-administered survey does not have the same statistical reliability that a telephone survey does not, that has. You can't, you can, you can say that with thirty-eight percent participating, that's a good percentage. But you can't say, because thirty-eight hundred participated, that my plus or, it's a plus or minus two percent. Which is what I said earlier on. Because when you have a self-administered survey, it's affected differently. So in other words, people see the question in front of them and see the answers. They can talk to any of their friends if they choose to. If somebody says, well, we're getting a survey, ask for this, or... So it, it has a different statistical reliability. It's not mathematically proven to be in the same realm as a telephone survey, where somebody's just asking a question, you don't have any, you don't see it, you haven't been informed of it. It's not, we're not saying who's doing the survey, that sort of thing.
Yeah. And I appreciate you going through that. Um, but my question really was, if, if you have, for instance, if, this example, if we had three percent that lived in our district, would we have continued with the sample?
Well, we didn't have three percent.
Right.
So it's hard for me, I wouldn't say... So it's hard for me, I wouldn't say that we would, we still would have gone through the survey, because that's the determination that we made to do. It might be reported differently if we only had, if it came back and ninety-seven percent lived outside the district. It may not, we may have looked at that data and said, well, we may not want to report that data, because that's, we didn't report the data on the employees over the age of sixty-five. But in the last survey, we knew a significant percentage live in the district. So we wanted to explore the whole option of what everybody felt, and then be able to dig down into only those people who live in the district, or only those people who are voting. But we wanted to give everybody an opportunity to respond.
Okay. And then, there's another question along that line for the telephone calls. I guess kind of the same thing. If we're calling the people, and we know who, they're at, I guess they're telling you initially that they do or do not live within the voting district that you're calling for?
No. The list, the list that we purchase is a list of all Arlington, initially it's a, it's a list of all registered voters in the Arlington Independent School District. Then that information is given to a computer service company, and they incorporate the history and the telephone numbers. Then we go back into that information and determine which network they're in, but we only call the people who are, who have the history of voting.
Okay. So you have a registered list, but you're only dialing the numbers of those who vote?
Correct, and have a phone number.
Okay. That answers my question. On the phone calls, when you said you were doing a little deeper dive, I'm assuming that was on the phone calls. Could the participants ask questions?
When you said a deeper dive, what do you, I said a deeper, I said we would go back into the data to dig deeper to find various results. The respondents were not allowed to ask questions. If they asked any question, the interviewer could only answer the question by using the actual question, repeating it. Not by attempting to specifically answer a question, or provide information, or that sort of thing.
Okay. So then my last question, and this is just for me. So do you think that, at some point, I know, as we were looking at these results, it seemed to be kind of swinging the other way? Like you said, we didn't see quite as much for those that support that didn't. Do we think that that could be from either not understanding, once we went into the M and O tax type questions, for the individuals that were participating, and/or if they just started to get question fatigue?
I'd like to think that they did not get question fatigue, unless you're thinking that eight answers that go through the survey, that focus on simply the TRE items, if that confused them. One of the things we talked about when we went over the data, is it certainly possible that some of the information we provided in those questions perhaps might, should not have been included?
Okay.
Okay? But I'd like, but this, the survey in its length is not any longer than what we normally do. So we don't usually have a fall-off when we ask questions in general. And a lot of times, like, even back in two thousand and thirteen, the question, the last questions that we asked were, would you support a bond election after we've provided all of these things, and the numbers went up? So I don't think it was fatigue, but it's certainly possible that we attempted to provide information that perhaps maybe even we shouldn't have, or that did get confusing, and there was a reason that they were less supportive than they were before.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mr. Hibbs?
Mr. Turco, thank you very much. I've actually had like three similar type of surveys that I've actually answered on my cellphone, and I did answer this one, by the way. So, speaking from firsthand, the question that my colleague over here was asking is, when, the survey I thought was long, when I took it. I mean, because I did feel like, wow, you're going back further. I knew what the methodology was, is to dig in deeper, to find out what level or threshold I would be comfortable in going and saying that I would support. And then, if you knew that this is what the outcome would be, you know, new schools or something like that, would that cause you to rethink that level of threshold? Because, you know, I heard that several times over, and, and I was, I was just thinking to myself, okay, I'm answering this because I'm a school board trustee, and, you know, of course I want to not skew it in any way, but how would someone else be answering? So my question was, is that, added the thirty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight telephone contacts that were made, you had four hundred and four that were actually completed surveys, correct?
Correct.
Do you, do you know how many people you got, you know, halfway through, and they said, okay, well, I've got to get off the line or something, or?
I do know that number, but I don't have that number with me, but I can certainly get it to Cindy tomorrow, so that you can have that number.
Do you think that that would have been?
It would have been less than a hundred. It was less than a hundred. I want to say seventy-eight, but I'm not, I'm not positive.
Okay, okay. You know, the, the numbers are very impressive in the support that, that people were saying, that took the survey and finished, saying that they would be supportive up to, you know, the different levels that were being outlined there, and that's going to be very meaningful, I think, for our committee as they look at this, and then the board as a whole, as we come back to try to say, okay, what will be the price tag on this if we move forward? That was what I was most interested in, is just checking to see if there was, if it, if there was a large number of those thirty-six thousand that would have gotten into the survey, just said, I'm just not going to complete it at this point.
Most of the large numbers are answering machines, do not answer.
I get that, because if it's less than a hundred or less, you know, that wouldn't, that would be validating exactly what you're saying. I mean, that's, there's another thirty-one thousand, somebody, you know, that's out there, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mr. Chapa?
I know that we got a report with, with the detailed questions that had, at some point in the past, and I just don't remember, and I don't have it in front of me. Was there a question in the survey that somehow asked the respondents whether they supported the idea of a joint bond TRE election, and combining those, just that idea, that concept?
No, we did not ask on a joint question. We said, you know, would you vote for a bond election? And at the same ti, in a separate, different question, we said, at the same time, the board is looking for this, and then would you vote for this? We did not say, if there was a joint election, would you vote for this and for that, or vice versa? We did not do that.
Okay. And do y'all in any way keep track of, I know that you said that the people doing the questioning would not answer the question, they would just repeat the question, but is there, was there some way for you to track? Were there particular questions that seemed to provoke questions most often from the people getting the questionnaire?
There was one individual who called and spoke with myself and the district relative to his participation in the survey, because he thought he was on a no-call list. But in terms of specific areas, it was not brought to my attention that one question was more likely to draw, answer, you know, bring up questions.
Okay. All right, those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Just curious, Mr. Turco, you're, the data is, is substantial, it's certainly detailed, and lots of thought and methodology goes into it that's far more complex than we have time to really address and ascertain here this evening. I'm just curious, do you know what the bond passage success rate is for the districts that you work with over, I don't know, say, the past five years that have generally taken your recommendations as far as the outcomes on the survey?
The only election that I have participated in, which was, a bond election was defeated, was an election in the McAllen ISD. And the problem with that particular election, I was brought in, and the committee was deciding to spend money only to upgrade facilities. And the voting public said we were interested, and we were supportive of that. And I made a presentation, I said, here's a theme that you might follow. After I was, after I made the presentation, the people in the committee and people outside of the committee said, well, we don't have any splash. We need to build buildings. And in the process of trying to build buildings, there was a dispute amongst the board, of which I was not a part of, the campaign of which I was not a part of, and the bond election failed. So, yes, I did a survey that said if you followed what you told me originally, it would have passed, but by the time the actual election came before the voters, the survey was irrelevant, because they had changed everything. But recently, we have passed Arlington, and we have never lost in this district. We have a history of twenty-plus years in San Antonio, in the North Side ISD, and they have passed six billion dollars, give or take. We have had success in both small school districts. The last small school district we did was in Lufkin, which passed that bond election. So we've had a lot of success, but yes, in McAllen, we failed.
Very good. Well, you didn't, but I appreciate that. That's great information. I don't see any other lights indicating questions from trustees on this section, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so our next speaker is David Serts, Cooperative Strategies. And again, we've contracted Cooperative Strategies to help facilitate our work. David worked with us in two thousand and thirteen, when the company had a different name, it was Young Richter at the time. They since have merged with a different company and have the name Cooperative Strategies. So he's going to talk about the data we gathered through the community dialogues, and then how we used the data that Ray Turco just spoke about, along with the data from the community dialogues and committee input, to begin developing options to address our needs. So, David.
Thank you, Cindy. President Reich, members of the board, Dr. Gavasos, it's good to be with you again.
And with you.
And with you. Let us rise. With that, let's just hop right to it.
I thought that was the conclusion.
No, that was... Most people would wish that right now, but we'll be quick. All right. So, another survey. So this is, goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, this is a survey that we put out at four meetings that we had for the community, February fourth and fifth, in four different locations around. We had about a little over a hundred people show up, not a whole lot of people there, but a good crowd, and then we released it online from the sixth to the fifteenth, and had most of respondents that way, totaling just under a thousand respondents. So this is not statistically sampling like, like Mr. Turco does. This is more akin to his employee survey. All right. So, most of the folks, being that it was online, did not attend the, the community dialogues. Most do live in the district, however, that was, that was pretty good, about ninety-four percent. Most were parents, over half of the folks who filled out the survey were parents. That last little orange dot that you can't read is private school students, but most were K-12 students, parents, rather, and some students. We had eighteen percent of the respondents were indeed students. Most were not employees, three-fourths were not employees. And this tile chart is just one visual way to say you had every school represented, in one way or the other. And you see that the school, the name and the, and the percentage of total response of that, nine seventy-four, Martin, Arlington, Lamar, Bailey, Bowles, going down, that's where you had most of the responses. So next, I'm going to go over a couple of questions where we asked folks, we gave them a list of different options to do for renovating space at different grade levels, and we asked, of the many, pick your top three. So, we started at elementary school, and we asked folks for different renovation options and possibilities at the elementary schools. Most often chosen were STEM Academy, Fine Arts Dual Language Academy, and Leadership Academy, followed by creating additional pre-K space, additional art rooms, and world languages. Strong support for the STEM, Fine Arts, and Leadership, well, really, frankly, all of them, but that's where the highest was. When we looked at different related questions for renovating space at the elementary level, gave a different list of things to go in and around the space, not the spaces themselves necessarily, but what, what you have, the quality of the space. So, technology, age-appropriate technology, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, most often chosen as one of the top three, followed by having a restroom closely adjacent to each classroom, and age-appropriate play areas. This is for preschool, my apologies, I didn't set that up well. This is preschool focus right here. The restroom was my clue to read the top of the line. When you look at renovation opportunities in the elementary schools, what were the programmatic things that you would want to renovate for? What would you, like we did for Corey and Jones in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, what are some of the programmatic things that you would want to prioritize at elementary school? This is going to be a support level, and then a ranking, so we have a rate rank. We'll ask the same question in the next one, and you'll see how they rank them, you know, in their top, one, two, three, four. Here, so the green bars are strongly support, the light green is support, neutral, and then over on the bars there are do not, strongly do not support, and do not support. Broad support, one of the themes of this, of this survey was that you have a broad support for the kind of initiatives that have been laid forth. It's more of a matter which is most strongly supported, rather than opposed, in, in most cases. So here, most strongly supported, playground equipment. And when we looked at across the themes of the survey, safety, movement, and access to the arts were themes that emerged throughout. And you're going to see that when we are, as an aside, today, looking at some of the condition-related data, we're looking at it in those themes. Play-related and activities, K-12, art, K-12, safety measures, K-12, so on and so forth. So when we ranked these same questions, in terms of, you know, number one, two, three, four, most often, full-day preschool improvements were chosen as a number one, which, if you look, toggle backwards here, pre-K, full-day PE, playgrounds, you see that the order shifts when you go to the ranking, where the playgrounds were most, had the highest level of support, but when you do the rankings, if you have to force rank, pre-K comes out on top, followed by PE wellness, and rebuilding, refreshing of facility due to its condition. Junior high, same concept, rate rank. So we look at the level of support, strongly support to do not support. Creating a new academy, we have three options, athletic improvements to existing facilities, creating a new academy with district-wide access, and refreshing a facility due to condition. Number one, creating the new academy with district-wide access. And the other two were close behind, and that follows exactly with the rankings. And that's creating that junior high feeder to continue the Corey and Jones fatal academies. When we look at high schools, same, same concept, rate rank. The options were athletic improvements to existing campus athletic facilities, career tech improvements to increase entry level career tech. We specified that so that the renovations were specified at the campus level rather than the Dan Diaper, CTC, and fine arts improvements to fine arts spaces and theaters. Far and away, the career tech came out as the strongest levels of support, followed by fine arts, strong, very strong. Again, very little on the negative. We're not looking at strongly opposed in this language. It's more of which we strongly for. And when we look at the rankings, that mirrored, again, career tech, strong in a way, the first, fine arts, and then the biggest challenge was with the athletic improvements, again. And similarly to what Mr. Turco was describing about the level of renovations at the athletics is something that we looked at in this survey as well, that the kinds of condition updates to the six-man locker room, that kind of thing, something that we can likely tease out further in this process through the steering committee and in the second community dialogue to get some more granular information on that and try to explain it a little bit better to the voter. Okay. So, with all the survey that we did, after having the two steering committee meetings, which they helped us craft this survey, much appreciated that we had the meetings, we had the survey, we then took all that data and took Ray Turco's data, look at the condition data that we had, and started to play, come up with different options. And the concept there, again, is to, as Dr. Gavasos kept, held us to account in 2014 and 2013, and here too, is providing that consistent world-class opportunity to students K-12, keeping it focused on the program, leading the program for students. So, what we looked at, obviously strategic plan alignment. What's a return on investment as it comes to student achievement? The options development time, we focus on supporting student learning. And then we go back and we look as well at the condition later, which you know, that's the 700, almost $800 million. That's the bulk of that dollar. But what we look at that, we look at splicing that up based upon the priorities that come out of the process, and that's a more of a technical exercise to divvy that up and give it back to the committee and the populace to look at. But here, and we're looking at programmatic support. Community input, the capital needs steering committee provided input through Q and A, through having our co-chairs there, and through their two meetings, community dialogue data and Turco. Interdependence, as again, Dr. Gavasos kept us focused on what is solving a persistent problem and where can we have multiple bottom lines of support? What do we have the internal capacity to achieve? So, when you see something out there about, you know, hey, we could do a program, that's not done, that's not tossed out lightly, that's something to be explored further down the road to, for viability. Legislative actions. We know a lot is riding on May 27, or it comes out at the end of May, legislative session. And so, we'll be keeping you up to date on that. And I can see that this options packet and this plan is going to have built in the capacity to respond to what comes from that session. Tax rate impact, sustainability, looking at from a financial perspective, what can you sustain and what kind of, what kind of funds and projects could you, could you actually manage over the next five years? We kept it at a high level within the options development. When it comes to the survey that Ray Turco just went over with you, we concentrated on these threshold levels and then got to work into the program, knowing that we're going to revisit this when we have more granular, we split out that condition data in more granular buckets. So, what I'm going to present next is a series of slides where we look at, these are the ideas, the initial ideas, the draft ideas that came out of the options work session, two days here last week. So, at the elementary schools, a challenge which presents itself as an opportunity is you have surplus capacity at the elementary schools. Why? It's a structural change in enrollment at the elementary level, birth data, and you're built out in a lot of your locations. So, the elementary population is declined historically, so you have surplus. Well, that leads itself to an opportunity and a priority for full-day pre-K. That's a district priority is to provide that. And the challenge of surplus capacity to deal with is now the opportunity that you can fill in that capacity with pre-K and still have room. So, the priority for age-appropriate playgrounds. One of the things that Ray Turco's survey showed is that when folks saw that every student's going to be impacted by it, that that was a bonus. Here, we're looking at putting age-appropriate playgrounds, that is for younger elementary and older elementary at all the schools, making ADA accessible with shade and appropriate substructure there as well. Older gyms, being undersized, not up to standard, looking at all the metal gyms at the elementary schools that aren't real gyms, that those would be replaced with actual brick-and-mortar gyms attached to the, to the physical structure. Having a continuation of services for special needs students. One of the priorities that we looked at in this options development was identifying potential spaces in regions where we could offer students better access, newer access to special education equipment in spaces closer to home. And having that as a more regionally appropriate and regionally accessible than they may be now. And then from a raise and rebuild or reconstruction standpoint, Webb and Thornton, looking at the condition assessments that were done, were two elementary schools in the top of the list slated for redevelopment or to be knocked down and rebuilt as a new school in place due to condition needs. So, the draft options. Create classrooms for full-day eligible and paid pre-K through existing surplus capacity in additions. Unfortunately, you don't have surplus capacity evenly distributed at every, I can speak, every elementary school. It's concentrated in different areas. And so, there will be some schools, in order to offer full-day pre-K, would need some additions. Most would not. Creating additional elementary academies, special programs, again, to be determined in seeding that through this process, what's sustainable, what's relevant, what's going to build off of success that you have. Age-appropriate ADA-accessible playgrounds at all elementary schools, went through that, the gym replacements, discussed that. Consider space required for distributed special education across the networks. Again, that's bringing, rather than having all centralized in one location or fewer locations, spreading it out, making it more accessible, cutting down on transportation time and needs for students to go for special programs. We also looked at Rowark Elementary School is in the Sam Houston feeder pattern, which the elementary schools there constitute about 48% of your surplus capacity at the elementary. So, most of the elementary surplus is in, is in the Sam Elementary Feeders, about 6,000. And so, when you look, some of that's going to be captured, a significant portion captured through pre-K renovations and other renovations, special education enhancements and those kinds of things. But you're still left with surplus. Rowark in the, in the top 10 list is number three on the scale of buildings that have been identified at the elementary level to be rebuilt due to condition. So, considering the surplus capacity, the condition of Rowark itself in the area, one of the options on the table is that those, that program at Rowark could cease. The students would have a home in a nearby elementary school. And we look at, well, what would the potential homes look like? What would the potential of Rowark be? Those are things to be discussed as options through the process. Finally, rebuilding Rev and Thornton with consideration for special programs, again, working with Dr. Wordson team as we flesh out this idea, what would make sense, what would build off success that you currently have and meet demand. At the junior high level, one of the priorities was to continue the elementary fatal programs, which are successful and in high demand at Jones and Corey through the junior high as was conceived back in 2013, 14. Provide space for, my favorite term to come out of this process is the fab lab, the fabrication lab, or an enhanced maker space, the ability to construct things as part of the core curriculum at the junior high level. Right sizing Bailey, providing enough capacity for the students. And Carter Junior High at the junior high level has been identified as the junior high school in most need of rebuilt due to, due to condition. And so, the draft options on the table right now is to renovate Gunn as the junior high Fine Arts Dual Language Academy. To create one fabrication lab at every junior high. So, that would be an equity thing, much like the pre-K, much like special education, much like the playgrounds at the elementary. So, be an equity offering at the junior high. Right sizing Bailey with additional classrooms plus new kitchen and cafeteria so that we're not squeezing the core spaces inordinately by the new addition. And rebuilding Carter. Now, Carter, because of its compact site, may, may require a site, either looking at swapping a site or a site acquisition, it just doesn't fit a track very well because of its layout and its size. So, that's something that needs to be fleshed out. High schools. Well, at the end of the five years, the kids who will be going through the junior high program at the fatal will have, will be in high school. And one of the priorities is to continue that as something that's, wants to provide that continuity of access K-12 and build on a successful program. So, you'll see one of the options there is to look at creating essentially a school within the school model to support high school Fine Arts Dual Language as an academy within a current existing comprehensive high school. Another challenge, want to provide access at all high schools for CTE instructions. Right now, when you don't have that, you have, for example, welding. Some kids have to go to the CTC for intro welding classes, which they could be taking at their home high school, which then curtails the program there at CTC, which is very popular and running, I understand, 12 hours a day or more or less. And so, this is, this is sort of those multiple bottom lines. We can provide the equity access at the high schools. We can free up more space at the CTC. Everybody wins. And then also addressing high-demand programs at Venture, which has a waiting list of, say, 300, I believe, career tech center, open on, as you know, open full, built, designed with an addition in mind and looking at that addition to meet the demand there, the agricultural center, considering an addition there that was planned, and building off of success at the STEM program at Martin High School, which, again, is in high demand. So, some of the draft options on the table right now, or the draft options on the table right now is career and lab additions to a high school to create the high school fatal academy, classroom, rather. Classroom additions to the CTC, it's about 200. Student capacity, consider additional classroom space at Ferguson for the Venture program, which is, has a waiting list. Looking at classroom and lab additions to support a high school health sciences program, looking at something in the center of the district in order to partner with UTA so that students can have access to dual credit offerings for a medical track, for a professional medical track. And welding instruction, career tech additions to Seguin and Lamar, looking at different options there to provide that sort of equity of access for those programs that are in high demand. PE and athletics, two more to go. PE and athletics. So, looking here, the junior high fields aren't, aren't standard for competition, so they lack a lot of the elements needed to support competition. The high school softball fields are not adequate either for competition. Looking at, they're having to travel to a softball complex, which, you know, causes the time, loss of instruction time, travel time, cost. And then, from a stadium perspective, also, UTA stadium will likely not be available in several years during the life of this bond for use. So, you'd go down to Wildman and Cravens, and that would not be sufficient to support all of the needs that you have for the stadium. So, you need to find a solution. So, the options on the table. One, renovate all junior high school fields with concessions and restrooms to support competition. Two, renovate all high school softball fields for competition to bring them up to standards at each high school. Equity. Renovate and make restrooms, lighting, and fieldhouse additions to Wildman and Cravens. This is, again, probably needs some further explanation, and we can work through the committee to help provide that some depth. Then, looking at, well, if you don't have access to UTA stadium anymore, you need to find a new partner to share one, or you need to build one. Those are your two logical pathways. Which way do you go? So, we need to look at that and see what's viable, what's feasible, and what partners we have out there. So, with that, I hit the wrong button. Let's try this again. There we go. Okay. District-level support. So, behind the scenes, we looked at, you know, not just the schools, but all the, all the facilities. And your operations center needs a lot of help, as I'm sure many of you know. And it cannot support the additional buses, white fleet needed. Your food service is currently disaggregated in different parts around the district, and the building itself, the facility, is inefficiently designed and has passed that point of no return. It needs, it needs replaced to be efficient. The enterprise center is going to have two vacant floors in the near future. That's an opportunity to use. The PDC is in high demand, which is good, and you have, there's a desire in the part of the district to offer some kind of a centralized parent welcome center for, for parents in the district. So, here are some of the considerations, the draft options on the table right now. Rebuilding the operations center on its site using a smaller footprint, vertical. And that would include the ability to have the food service, dry goods warehouse right there and all of, support all the buses and white fleet. Renovating the enterprise center to consolidate all academic, the academic services in one location and provide training space and house backup location for the district's network. Currently, you have your network at the CTC there. There's not a backup location. That's a, that's a desire to have that in case it would fail for any reason, you wouldn't lose all of your data. So, backup server house there at the enterprise. Consider additions to the PDC as a possibility, and also the possibility of renovating existing facility for a parent welcome center. These are options. Now, these will not all stick when it comes to the final recommendations. These are the first concepts. As we mentioned, the process here is going to go through the steering committee, and they're going to have two passes to provide comment before we bring this to the community and the dialogue. Real brief, as I mentioned before, we are looking at that 780 million in total condition needs and breaking that down by sort of the every school shall model. You know, what should every elementary school have programmatically and from a condition standpoint to support it? What about junior high? And what's that answer for senior high? So, we're answering that question right now. That's going to be, again, presented to and run through the steering committee for comment and provided to you as well. So, these are just all the things, again, a summary that we're looking at, fixing up what you have, taking care of your assets. So, here we are again, steering committee three and four. That is where we will have the options prepared for the steering committee to review. And then, the community dialogue, as some of you may recall, in 2014, we have those options with the steering committee comments that goes to the community. When we ask the community for their feedback on these options, we're going to ask them for their level of support for each option as it stands, and then of the multiple different options to achieve a certain pathway, what's their top choice, second choice, third choice, so forth. And then, are there any additions or edits that they would make to their top choice? That is the rhythm that we ask for these questions. And then, that's going to help us provide, go into executive session with your leadership and steering committee leadership to take the different draft options, put it into a draft recommendations list. That will go through two passes, again, with the steering committee before it's presented to you as a package in May or early June. So, Dr. Reich?
Thank you, Mr. Sirtz. Appreciate the level of breadth and depth of this information. I don't see lights, certainly. There's one. And there's some others. I have a couple of points, but we'll let other trustees speak. Mr. Chapa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sirtz. I'm going to start with slide 52 and just kind of go in the order of notes that I have here with questions. So, this is just sort of a general question on all of the survey results that you have that kind of have this distribution. They're all fairly consistent with the very low numbers of the do not support, strongly do not support. And, you know, you could say the flip side of that is, well, we have a lot of consistency on support. But do we have a sense of whether or not the people who consistently are indicating do not support or strongly do not support are essentially the same people? Or is there meaningful variation between the different items that they were surveyed on? So, some people might be strongly support for one, they might strongly just, you know, they don't support something else. Or are we seeing some sort of a pattern of people who are supportive or generally supportive, and the people who are generally not supportive are generally not supportive?
That's an excellent question, and I don't have the answer for you right now, but I'll find it and I'll get it back to you.
Okay. On slide 53, the next, the next slide, you might not have this information either, but you had the breakdown of the campuses that the respondents came from earlier in the presentation. For the, the question on school demolish and rebuilding, do we have a sense of how that breaks across the different campuses? Because I saw, you know, if I'm recalling correctly from the breakdown you presented, most of the campuses that make up the, you know, the bulk of the respondents for the surveys are not people who actually are going to be in the facilities that we're looking at doing a demo or a substantial rebuilding of. So, I'm just curious if, if support goes up depending on the facility, the condition of the facility the respondent is familiar with?
That's a great question, again. And I'll have to look at that cross tab and look at that for you. The intent of this question was, by design, broad, is we want to ask sort of philosophically, what would you, do you? what would you, do you, tell me what you would support, um, but we can look at, uh, the response from those schools that are most likely in, fall in this category.
Okay. And then on slide 56, looking at the high school options, and it really is also, I think, most starkly illustrated on slide 50, we'll say 57. This was a theme that came up in, in Mr. Turco's presentation and yours hit on it as well, where it seems like, to the extent that there is a least popular thing
Correct.
in any of those, and again, it's broad support, it seems to be touching on athletics. And so I know Mr. Turco's survey didn't address this, but I went to one of the community dialogues, and I know there were breakout sessions and there were discussions among the people who were there. And I know you're going to go into this, you said, with some granularity in the future, but do you have an initial sense of what's driving that based on the discussions you heard at the first four community dialogues?
I have an initial sense, but it's not based upon what I heard at the first dialogues.
Okay.
Uh, I was a little higher, I was floating around, so I didn't get the opportunity to be embedded more than two different groups. But, uh, the initial sense is, is just by comparison to your neighbors, perhaps, on some stadium projects.
So they, there's a, there's confusion maybe when we talk about athletic improvements, and in Mr. Turco's survey, it was an upgrade to the existing facilities. Do you think people are, they think we're talking about building new big shiny things?
That's my hunch.
Okay, on slide 61, you touched on this very briefly, and I'm just not familiar with the concept, and I was reading, but the, on the junior high, um, opportunities, a fab lab? Can you give me just a little bit more detail on what a fab lab is?
That's, that's a local lingo here, um, but, uh, so Dr. Words can, can step in if I, if I misspeak here, but essentially, it's, you, you have in the elementary level, you know, the maker space, let's go play and create.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then in, in high school, you have that with really big equipment, junior high is that, that space between. It's starting to build things, some of the things we're talking about was that it's not a career tech focused concept, but it's more to support the general core curriculum of, of concept to theory to creation to innovation and so forth. So, Dr. Words, do you want to?
Hi.
Hi.
That's actually a really good question. So one of the things we discussed is how do you have a progression in terms of continuum of, of opportunities for students from elementary through? And in elementary, all the schools have STEM labs. And with the introduction of the active learning cycle where kids are able to demonstrate mastery of content, mastery of learning in a variety of ways, a fab lab is an opportunity for kids to fabricate or create things that would allow them to demonstrate mastery of content in, in, in unique ways. So if you were in a STEM lab, for example, in elementary, we have content curriculum where we take math standards and science standards and combine them in, around real world projects. In a fab lab at the junior high level, students would be able to do similar things, except the demonstration of their learning would be, uh, something they actually could create and build, um, using the materials that are there.
Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful. Okay, then on the next slide, dealing with the high schools, I had a question. I, we mentioned, we call out several campuses here, and I know that your discussion was much broader than what has been distilled here. Are there any sort of challenge, opportunity, items for, say, Sam Houston and Bowie, because they're not specifically called out on here? Is there anything that's percolated up in terms of options for those campuses?
So the discussion around a challenge there and opportunity is enrollment balance, frankly. Um, you have, uh, as, Sam has, is full and always has been, even with the addition, right, still, uh, in the, in the mid 90s in terms of utilization. Uh, and, and Bowie, uh, has space, and that's, and that's opening up even further as enrollment declines at Bowie over the next several years. So, uh, they're close together, and so one of the options discussed and opportunities, hey, could there be a boundary change here that could help alleviate some of the pressure on Sam while providing, uh, you know, filling and better utilizing the space at Bowie? Now, one of the inherent challenges of that is because they're so close, the boundary line, you know, you're, you're kind of seeing schools out of both, both eyes, you know, you're, you're really close to both. Uh, but that was discussed as an opportunity to look for through this process is a boundary change option that would affect a, uh, not fill the whole gap, but partially part of that gap.
Okay. And I guess my question is more, I mean, that, that's certainly a, a challenge for us that, that we know about, in, in terms of any programming challenges.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, that, that's my fault.
Uh, no, no, no. In here, uh, the programming discussions were focused on having the, having equitable access to ninth and 10th grade career tech first, providing space for STEM high school program to build off into the health sciences program with UTA second, to look at a high school fatal school within a school. Uh, and then beyond that, um, no, we didn't, we, the career tech addition, the addition to the career tech center, but as far as programs at the high school, that was the focus unless I'm missing something.
The fine arts programs are part of the condition.
Pardon?
Fine arts programs are part of the condition.
Oh, oh, right, yes. And there, and there's, there's a myriad of improvements to fine arts that are in, captured in the condition assessment. That's not captured here because it were, this is more of a programmatic focus.
Okay. All right. And then on slide 32, or sorry, that's page 32, slide 64. Can you flesh out a little bit more for me what the parent welcome center concept looks like?
Sure, I'll start it, and then somebody can pick up if they, uh, they see gaps. But the, the basic concept there was to provide a central location for, uh, matters of enrollment and registration, re-registration, um, and correct me if there's others.
And also, uh, testing for language proficiency and potential placement there, uh, the pace department, uh, parent and community, uh, engagement, uh, things of that nature.
Okay. Where do we do those things now?
In different places.
Got it.
Scattered throughout, yeah.
Okay. All right, those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Miss, whoa, try that again. Sorry, Ms. Walton.
I didn't do it.
No, I did, go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Um, I had that same question about the parent center, uh, and I kind of guess that's what it was. Uh, following up back to one of, um, Mr. Chapa's questions, uh, about the high schools and, um, enrollment balance and that sort of thing. Do we know, uh, transfer numbers between those two schools? Anyone?
We do have all that data. We have the data on, we've, we've geocoded all the students, we know where they live, we know where they attend, so we do what we call a live attend analysis. Basically, what's the migration between
Yeah.
school boundaries? We do have all that data.
Okay. I would like to see what it is between Sam and Bowie.
Sure, we can get you that.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mrs. Mays.
Thank you, President Reich. Um, one follow-up question from, um, Chapa's question about athletic facilities. So you gave your opinion. I've noticed in both the Turco and your information that the questions asked about the athletic facilities dealt with upgrading or improvements to existing. Were there any questions about building new athletic facilities and/or will that come maybe through our committee, or has it been a question at all?
Excellent, excellent question. No, there's not been a question about building a new facility. Uh, when it was originally conceived prior to really engaging with the steering committee, the concept on the table was simply improvements to Wildman and Cravens. Then as the survey data has come out, and that's tested consistently, the most challenging of all of them, there was this, that we've collectively had this step back moment at the same time going, okay, well, so what's going on with this question? Because we all kind of ask it around the same time and we're getting similar answers. Uh, and so the concept moving forward is because of the situation with UTA, the stadium here, that we're going to have, uh, two pathways, and we will have time over the coming months to flesh those out, and then the community will have a chance to provide feedback on those specifically. Uh, the intent, have all cost estimates done by that point, so when we have that second community dialogue, there'll be two clear pathways, uh, that with, with costs associated to them for renovating, with more descriptions of what those are, building new, uh, or sharing.
Okay. And I am probably very biased in my thought thinking process, but could it also be flipped the opposite way that you were saying? Maybe people are not willing to put more money in what we have because maybe they, they want something new versus they don't want to fix something that they don't like?
Yeah, that's the problem with hunches, we don't know. Uh, that's a great, that's a great question, um, and that's, um, well, we'll find out more, but we, we put it to the test, so to speak. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Um, I'm curious, on the, uh, the response rate, do you happen to know, and this is more curiosity?
Sure.
Uh, just looking at our, our participation levels, um, how they compare to our first go at it and the, for the 2014 bond, are they?
Yeah, this is similar response, uh, right around the same, in fact. Uh, we had, uh, if memory serves, just about 100 and, it was 160 or so attended the community dialogues, we were like 110s right at now, um, and we had a total of about 1,000. So we're right around the same response rate.
Okay, great. And then on the, the draft options, not anyone specifically, but, uh, as an example, if, if we look at all the draft options that are specific to the facilities, uh, I just want to be clear that I understand and not make an incorrect assumption that they would all essentially add up to that total of 1. something billion, or is that incorrect?
Great question. So, uh, these draft options, some of them are above and beyond the condition assessment. So for example, um, well, looking at, say, the elementary gyms, that was captured.
Okay.
Uh, that was captured in the assessment. In fact, more might, based on what we have been discussing about those sort of the, what's the equity lens to look at that, maybe more was captured in the assessment that would actually make it through to a prioritized recommendation.
Okay.
So that, that one example. Uh, on the flip side, if we look at, um, well, let's, let's go to an example here. The fabrication labs at the junior highs, that was something that came out of the visioning process, in this op, in this process, so that would be of above and beyond.
Okay.
And so then we look at, okay, we know that that 1.2 is an all in everything, and then what do we prioritize down to allow what we, we most want programmatically?
Okay. Well, that's great, I, I appreciate that clarification, and that, uh, I think is just a testimony to having, uh, active participation and querying the, the community, that things, no matter how, how in-depth we've done the, the preparation on the front end, that, hey, there's still some really good opportunities and ideas out there to consider.
Absolutely.
Perhaps put into the mix. Very good. Uh, last chance at this point, any other trustees have any questions from Mr. Sturts on the survey and community dialogues? All right, I, I will say, I'll, I'll look forward to, as I call it, the next rendition of the, uh, the smiley face ETs on, on the chart. That's what I look at these things and see. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we'll transition into the budget piece of this, and again, uh, all of this is a work in process and, uh, just, uh, uh, we are very much in, in the middle of what we're doing. So to that point, uh, this slide shows you, um, a graphic of our entire budget process, and the dark red vertical line here shows where we are in that process. Uh, schools have been putting in their budgets, departments have submitted theirs, uh, we are in the middle, actually probably three-fourths of the way through, of, um, doing department budget reviews, and should finish that, uh, this week or early, um, the week after spring break. Staffing for elementary schools is pretty much wrapped up, uh, staffing for secondary schools will start, uh, after spring break, uh, and then once staffing is finished, then we in the finance area, uh, work on the, the payroll budget, which is the, the, the chunk of the dollars that go into the budget. We have, um, been watching and will continue to watch very closely, uh, the work of the legislature, uh, because, um, as we all know, school finances is a, um, a, a priority topic with them, uh, the session along with, uh, property tax, um, reform, and so those things will, uh, undoubtedly, uh, yield some impact to our budget and choices that we make here in terms of looking forward to potential, uh, need for a TRE. And so, uh, we will probably not have information, uh, on the outcome of their work until right at the end of May, and we hope it's at the end of May. Uh, the, the regular session is scheduled in May 27th. People we talked to, uh, still think that they will finish on time. Uh, if they are not able to come to agreement on some of these big pieces, uh, that will move to a special session. All right. So as you know, uh, we have a, a deficit budget today, uh, and, uh, we expect to have a deficit budget next year. And again, those deficits are, uh, a result largely of changes in our revenue, that's why we highlight, um, uh, the revenue line there. Uh, it's largely the way the school funding system works, is we say over and over, that funding system is broken because as our property values go up, we get less state aid, there's no factor in the formulas for inflation, uh, and yet, um, uh, we have programming needs and needs to maintain competitive salaries, and so we know that, uh, inflation has, uh, an impact on our budget each year. Uh, as we work on budgets any given year, especially this year, as we look, uh, beyond just this one year and out, uh, multiple years for potential operating needs, things that we consider, uh, include our enrollment projections, uh, that, uh, includes enrollment management efforts, uh, that includes program offerings and, and, uh, participation in different programs that we already, uh, offer in our district. Uh, competitive compensation is something that, um, is a key topic every year as we work on the budget. Full day pre-K, while, uh, that, uh, has a, maybe a, a bit of a longer term impact to us, and that's something that's very connected to the work we're doing with capital needs at the moment, because, um, if we implement full day pre-K, um, there will need to be the, uh, operating response, if you will, there will be, uh, additional teachers and TAs, um, additional supplies, materials and support services, uh, for that program. And then certainly operations always, uh, and then again, as I mentioned, legislative actions and, uh, what that may look like, um, in the, the, at the outcome of this session. So, um, we, we look at different ways to close that deficit, and we've had this discussion many times, those choices are fairly limited. Uh, we can look at budget reductions, we can also, uh, spend some of our fund balance, which we say over and over again, does not eliminate a deficit, it covers a deficit, okay? And then, uh, adding revenue, and, uh, the primary tool to do that would be, uh, through raising the MNO tax rate, uh, and any increase from our current rate would require a tax ratification election. So, uh, I'm going to show several slides we've seen before, but, um, uh, just as some examples of things that we look at and have done in the, in recent years to, um, improve efficiencies in our budgets. We've consolidated some facilities, uh, most of that, uh, these consolidations were accomplished through the 2014 bond program, much through the discussion, similar discussions to those we've had tonight and the process, um, uh, that is similar to the one we're engaged in right now. We closed a couple of facilities, uh, to be more efficient in our use of, uh, assets, including land and buildings and, and personnel. Uh, then, uh, looking at high school staffing, we started last year staffing at 95% of our enrollment projections because we began to understand that, uh, we don't have every student in a seat with us every period of the day, and so, um, this has been a way that we've been able to, uh, tighten up our efficiency in high school staffing. And then, again, just staffing very tightly to our enrollment projections, and that, uh, that filters down into the elementary, uh, grade levels. Class size waivers is something new to the district this year, and, uh, I believe we have, uh, roughly 19 or so waivers that we've asked for this year. We created a really sound process to look at, um, uh, when we need a waiver and how to compensate for that, and, uh, and, and so we're monitoring that very closely, and so that's, uh, been a, a, a very, um, judicious, I would say, approach to, to going at staffing needs, and, uh, we've saved, uh, 19 teaching units so far this year by doing that. Uh, and then enrollment management, uh, we've, uh, implemented a program to, uh, promote and encourage, uh, out of district transfers to come to us, um, so we've been working through that, and we'll continue to do that. We have one more transfer window that will open, um, I believe, right after spring break. Uh, other things we've done involve, uh, energy conservation and, um, rebidding, uh, electricity supply contracts that have very long-term, very significant, uh, yields to us in terms of savings opportunities. Uh, we, we benchmark our, uh, operations, uh, functions against other districts through an annual benchmarking study, and that, that informs us where we might have opportunities for some adjustments, uh, one of which, uh, we've, uh, are looking at now has to do with controls on, um, irrigation consumption and, and how we and, and how we, uh, manage that. And so some of that's actually built into the, the next bond package. And even, uh, we're working towards some improvements in that area now, even through the, the operating budget. Uh, activity buses, we've talked about already, they're smaller buses, they're more efficient, um, and for transporting small groups of kids. Uh, and, uh, drivers, uh, do not have to have a CDL. So, uh, there's a wider pool of people that can, uh, that can drive those buses. Um, equipment and vehicle upgrades, uh, getting more efficient equipment. And then department reorganizations, we've, we've, uh, within various, um, uh, the academic services areas, we've realigned some functions, uh, that have, uh, and, and even, uh, realigned functions from across a couple of divisions that, uh, have allowed us to be more efficient in how we use our, our personnel resources. And then Dr. Barlow and his team look at, um, uh, uh, program evaluations to help inform choices that we make, um, you know, especially on the academic side. We have a number of partnerships, uh, that we've engaged in with, uh, different entities around, uh, the community. Again, a lot of these are associated with programming that was born out of the 2014 bond program. So again, you continue to see the, uh, evidence of that interdependence, uh, between how we operate and, um, our, uh, our capital needs to support programming. So, uh, again, you know, these are things that we have done, we continue to look for these opportunities always, and we are doing that now. In terms of revenue opportunity, if we raise our M and O tax rate, we can generate additional, um, revenue. And so this chart, well, there's a lot of numbers on there, basically what it shows you, at each penny, uh, from where we are today, which is a dollar four, up to the, the constitutional limit of a dollar seventeen, how much additional money could we generate at each penny? And so, um, the max here, uh, that we can generate, we think at a dollar seventeen is close to forty million dollars. Netted out of that, um, is, um, recapture. And so we've had the discussion before that our wealth level, our property wealth level, uh, for term, in terms of equalization on those pennies above a dollar six, from a dollar six to a dollar seventeen, we now have exceeded that, uh, the threshold that now would cause us to need to, uh, would cause us to be subject to recapture. And so, uh, it's not much, uh, but, uh, it is certainly something that, uh, that we're mindful of. And we've taken that into account in these calculations. So all of the numbers on the far right have the recapture estimates already, um, backed out of them. All right. As we do all of this work, both capital needs planning, the, uh, uh, budget planning, uh, we always are very mindful as to what impact this has on taxpayers. And so again, a lot of numbers on this chart, but what it shows you is that we can make different choices, uh, about the size of a bond package, which different sizes of the bond package are listed across the top of the chart, and then the M and O tax rate down the side. We know that our debt, our current debt is declining, which means that, um, our INS rate, or, or the rate that we use to repay our bonds, if nothing else changes, that rate is declining. That gives us some capacity or some room to, uh, add, uh, some of these additional capital needs that we've identified, uh, with, uh, a very limited, um, impact on the tax rate. Also, we can look at that, that M and O side and at, um, uh, possible needs there and opportunities, uh, to fund programming. And so that will yield an increase in the tax rate. But again, when you net it all together, you see that we can, uh, maintain a, a pretty modest increase on the tax rate. Just for point, just, just to point it out, if we were to go all the way to a billion dollar bond package and all the way to a dollar seventeen on an M and O tax rate, then we estimate that the, um, increase on that to a homeowner would be fourteen cents. For the average homeowner, that would mean about two hundred and thirty dollars more a year. Okay, that kind of puts in context, uh, the, the, the impact there. So, brings us all the way back full circle to, you know, we are, are doing all of this work to, um, uh, really focus on our long-range, uh, financial priorities and focus, uh, solutions around how to best, um, uh, accomplish those priorities, all of them. And they are all very interconnected and interdependent. So we will continue working on our routine, our, our normal budget cycle. Um, the FFC should be presenting to, uh, the board in the spring, later in the spring. Uh, and then we follow our normal budget schedule, would have us coming to you all in early June with a preliminary budget, uh, and then adopting the budget, uh, by the end of June, as we're required to do by, by law. So, um, again, uh, the, the options before us include, um, uh, potentially a TRE on the M and O side and a bond package to address capital needs and, uh, continuing to look for budget efficiencies as we go forward. And to give you a sense of the timeline, uh, this is pretty high level, but, um, if we were to have a, decide that, um, we want a, to hold both a bond election and a TRE, the point at which we could do both together would be November election. And so this, uh, timeline maps out, uh, uh, the general work that takes place between now and November. It starts with the Capital Need Steering Committee and their work, um, the work we normally do each year on building, uh, the bond package, I mean, the, uh, budget, and certainly also this year, uh, monitoring legislative actions. Uh, Financial Futures Committee will report to the board. Um, and we will continue to take input on the, uh, the capital need side, as, uh, David explained, uh, through community dialogues and further work with the Capital Need Steering Committee. In June, we would anticipate that, uh, the Capital Need Steering Committee is going to make its report to the board, uh, on, uh, prioritized, uh, capital needs to carry us out through year twenty twenty-five. Uh, we'll present the budget to the board, the board will hold a hearing, as we're required by law to do so, on, uh, the, uh, budget and the proposed tax rate. And then we have to actually adopt the budget in June. We get our certified property values July twenty-fifth, and then, um, by August nineteenth, the board would need to make a decision, uh, on, uh, elections. And if you want to do, we want to do, uh, a bond election, uh, and/or a TRE election, uh, under current law, we have to call those by August nineteenth. And then the general election date, uh, this year is November fifth. So with that, that is an awfully lot of material, and we'll be happy to answer anything we haven't covered yet.
Very good, thank you, uh, Mrs. Powell. Uh, we'll start off with Mr. Hibbs.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. I, I really wanted to hold most of my remarks until this point. Um, Ms. Powell, in the very, it, you summarized exactly where I think that we needed to finish up when we talk about the general operating budget. On your slides, when you had the, uh, efficiency initiative since 2014, you don't have to go to them, but right, right now, but I want to point out that there was three consecutive slides talking about the efficiencies that we've put in place since 2014. We have continuously tried to, um, responsibly lower our deficits and, um, and offer new programmings as much as possible. I mean, uh, you think of what we brought on, just, you know, uh, the, the huge item, obviously, is what we've been able to do with the, um, CTC Center and, um, our, um, uh, facility, uh, with the Ag Center and such. We've expanded those, uh, uh, those programs tremendously. At the same time, we're not getting any more money. So, uh, so we're starting to squeeze that fruit very, very tightly to get the, the very, uh, the, uh, the smallest remnants of, uh, any juice out of, maybe that's, uh, potentially there. And one of the things that you mentioned, you said, we've, we've reduced our staffing to ninety-five percent at the high school campuses, understanding that we have moved some out of that campus to go to the CTC Center, to go to the Ag Center, to go to the different dual credit, um, placements that they may have at UTA and such. We don't have a lot more capacity to do that. Thus, we're asking for the bond, thus we, we're having a potential of looking at a TRE. That brings us to the budget considerations that you pulled out, or that you have on one of your slides. And then you talked about enrollment. Our enrollment is not growing at this point. We'll be fortunate for it just to be maintained for a certain amount of time, until maybe new program, uh, new programming comes in. Uh, we are bringing on new special programming. You've got competitive compensation that we know that we have to have to be able to, um, uh, you know, bring in and retain the best, um, uh, potential, uh, teachers that are out there. We're all committed to that. Um, you've got the full day, uh, pre-K, and then you've got just operation budgets. We don't know what's going to come out of the legislature right now, but we, we have high hopes. But you know what? Um, I've been on the, uh, on the board for nine years now and, and, um, we've seen a lot of disappointment, even through court cases that we thought we were going to be. We're going to have to talk, and part of this, uh, the conversations we as a board have, and then this board as it moves forward, is going to be talking about some trade-offs of programming. When it's going to be a very real conversation, and maybe I want to be the one that tries to prepare this board as we look at looming deficits. And before we go to the, uh, taxpayers and say, okay, we were going to go to a TRE, I, I want to make sure that we have the messaging out there, that we have continued yearly to become more efficient and more efficient. One of the things that we have to look at also is we have to discuss with the expansion of programming as we bring that on, and we know that we have some expansion coming. We've got to look and see if there's, needs to be certain elimination of programs, uh, that are not, um, meeting expectations, I would say, in our district. Where we have classrooms and trying to offer, um, a certain X, Y, Z course at introductory and advanced, but we don't have more than ten to twelve kids in it, and we're trying to fulfill a teacher. Is there a sports program that we have less than thirty? And we're employing three coaches? Is there a fine arts program? So I'm, I'm telling you that, and Mr. Hogg pointed this out very well, uh, several years ago, when we had to look at cut, uh, cutbacks. You know? We need to make sure that, uh, whatever we're offering, that the teachers and the administrators, and we as a district are making sure that, um, we can fill those classes. If we don't, then maybe that program's not right for the district at this time. I think that's going to be a very key thing for, um, our citizens to see that we were able to do or willing to do as we go out. Because at the end of the day, we're going to need to make sure that, that we're showing our, uh, fiscal responsibility. And I think that's something that our district has done very, very well. So in making those comments, I just want to make sure that we're clear that as we expand programs, we have to review everything. Because all that's happening by expanding programs is our operating costs go up. And if there's no new, uh, funding, it's going to cause that deficit to get larger. So when we talk about ballparks, you know, one of the things that, uh, we, uh, that was being mentioned is upgrades. When I heard the surveys, it said, you know, would you be willing for this upgrade? And in my head, or mind, it didn't differentiate that an upgrade wasn't a new stadium. So I think that one of the things that we have to go forward, if we come, if it comes out of a committee, that we say, hey, we would like to have Cravens, Roman type of stadiums at each campus and be responsible from, from building a new, you know, thirty or sixty million dollar, but we can do something that, that's going to really, um, bring the community together, that that would be the potential that this board looks like, look at. Or if there's a new opportunity that is coming into town where we can go and partner. So we want to make sure that we have, uh, that availability to look at things, uh, uh, through those glasses at the same time. I think it's going to be really important because of the way that we saw, um, some of the responses when it came to athletics. And it was to your point that you, and I was going to follow up, but I didn't want to, um, belabor what you had, you were saying at the time. But I think that I say our fine arts and our athletic directors, uh, sitting there together, what this district does very, very well is be able to keep our kids engaged through extracurricular activities. And that comes in the form of, of fine arts and athletics. And that's even part of our strategic plan, that we want our students to be involved in co-curricular and extracurricular activities. The, just as these two are sitting next to each other, you don't find that in every district, we need to actually be able to take that to the public, the importance that fine arts and athletics has in keeping our children engaged in our district. So I think that would be a very, very positive, um, uh, thing that we already start looking at right now as we go to, uh, inform our community, you know, based on the recommendations that comes back from, uh, the, um, committee itself. And as a charge, uh, I wouldn't say a charge, but as a recommendation, if I was, uh, a committee member, is just saying, what are those hot buttons? What are those things that you could also bring back to say, you know, it was our view from a committee's standpoint that we misunderstood this, or we think people could misunderstand this, and maybe this is a better way of positioning it once you've heard, um, you know, what the capacity is and the cost might be. So, uh, that's just some thoughts that I have. But one thing I just want to bring up is, uh, and just hammer in, because it's not a popular thing, is that we as a board need to be able to be prepared to say, in our expansion of some programs, where we have a willingness to, um, move away from some things that are less successful within our district. Because, you know, it's just like, oh, who would ever know, uh, fifteen, twenty years ago, that the phone book would no longer be relevant, but it isn't. So, you know, it's the same type of, uh, of program, and I think that we have, um, in education. There are certain things that may have changed. But that I'll let it go.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. I couldn't have said it better myself. I really appreciate that. As perhaps other trustees are, are considering or contemplating questions, I, I have, uh, something that is very similar, uh, along those lines, which is at what point, as staff, do you start looking at contingencies? For example, these one or both do not make it. What, uh, when do you start that process? When do we evaluate that process? Uh, and the specific outcomes or talking points of each of those to address, much to Mr. Hibbs' point, pushing forward on some and maybe having to detract on others, because, uh, we've, we're, we're very bold and, and want to shoot for the moon, but if our community has a different idea, we have to be prepared to still run responsibly.
Right. And so that, that is part of, of our task. And I think, um, as we move further, probably into summer, and begin to understand what, uh, actions the legislature takes or doesn't take, uh, and what position that may put us in, uh, that's probably the, the time at which we would begin to say, okay, that may put us in, that's probably the time at which we would begin to say, okay, if X doesn't happen, then here are the adjustments we'll have to start making, so probably summertime.
Very good, very good. Another item that becomes a, I think, common topic of conversation is the fund balance and the utilization of the fund balance and the size of the fund balance. And it would be worthwhile, and I know this is a pretty easy thing for you if you don't already have it, is the, maybe the itemization or the total of the drawdown on the fund balance, what those funds have been used for, say, over this past bond, the past five years, because there will be certainly those that would say, well, you have X amount in that fund balance, that is so much money, you can live off of that for a long time. And we all know that that's not the situation. It would just be one more note to make out to the community and for our own information on some fiscal stewardship of what we've done. Are there any other trustees that have questions at this point in time? All right, well, we will consider this item closed. Thank you very much to everybody that's participated in the development of this deep presentation this evening. I know it was a lot of moving parts, a lot of coordination, a lot of data, and it took a long time to coalesce all that together, to make it into digestible chunks, if you will, for us as a governing body. So thank you very much. And with that, let's, yes, move right into legislative update.
This will be shorter than last, very brief.
We like that expectation.
We do want to update you, though, on legislative activities, where they are in the session. It's a 140-day session, and as of today, they are through 57 of those 140 days, so they have 83 days left. And so that's good news, that number's getting smaller. And the last day to file bills is March the 8th, and so that'll be by Friday of this week, any bills that are going to be considered have to be filed. In terms of our advocacy efforts, we've, especially the board, has been very busy in the past few weeks. On March, or I'm sorry, February 20th, several of us traveled to Austin and met with every one of our senators and representatives, talked with them about our legislative priorities, and focused a lot on school finance, on accountability, one bill in particular, or one issue in particular, and also on our request and desire to run a pilot healthcare program and exit out of the TRS active care program. Everyone was very receptive, and I think it was well worth the visit. We've also filed position letters on several bills that directly align with our legislative agenda, and there will be more of those coming in the next few weeks as more and more bills are heard. We've been working with Representative Kraus and Senator Hancock, again, on that TRS active care bill, and then also with Representative Turner and Representative Kraus on an accountability bill specifically around transparency of the data that's used to calculate our CCMR rating as part of the accountability system. You all, we're well aware of what our legislative agenda is. We have three overriding objectives, local authority and relevant instructional programming, and then suitable funding and relief from unfunded mandates. Our legislative agenda falls across these five broad areas. You can see these listed. And then in terms of taking the significant things that have occurred since maybe the last time we had a legislative update in those different broad categories on academic accountability, a bill was filed and was heard in committee. It was House Bill 851 that would make the provisions of the individual graduation committees permanent, and we filed a letter of support on that. And then the House Public Ed Committee will meet tomorrow. They meet every week, usually on Tuesdays during the session. Their focus tomorrow is around assessments, and so I think there are six bills on that agenda. But really kind of the, maybe more interesting thing to come out of that hearing will be invited testimony around the third grade reading scores, and the fact that there have been, there's been some research that indicates that the reading difficulty level is actually higher than the grade level being tested. And so that has implications for accountability ratings for districts across the state, so that may be interesting to watch. In terms of school finance, and we just had a discussion about the budget and the fact that, you know, there may be some action that takes, that occurs in the legislative session that has an impact on our budget and on choices we make going forward. And so we expect that tomorrow, that the comprehensive or omnibus school finance bill will be filed. Dan Huberty has authored that. He's the chair of the House Public Ed Committee. He served on the Texas Commission on Public School Finance. And our understanding is it's, we've heard a range, anywhere from 400 to 1,000 pages long, this bill. But we hear bits and pieces, different places, and we understand that the bill will contain some significant increases to the basic allotment. It will do that by putting some new money into the system, into the formulas, and also eliminating some existing allotments that are in the formulas, just to give districts more flexibility in how to spend the money. Will do away with the Cost of Education Index, which is the factor that is supposed to recognize regional cost differences, mainly around personnel, that has not been updated since the last, I think, in the early 90s. And a new pre-K allotment, we hear, may be in the mix. We don't, again, we don't know the specifics of any of this, we just have heard these things in the last week, a couple of different places. And would also help provide for property tax relief by having districts compress their M&amp;O rates, and then that coupled with the large increase in the basic allotment will dramatically lower recapture. And so all these things could have a very positive impact for us and other school districts as well. The interesting thing is there's no real indication yet that there's a finance bill coming out of the Senate. The dollars that the Senate appropriated in the budget bill for public ed largely would be consumed through property tax reform and relief, and Senate Bill 3, which would give every teacher a $5,000 raise, and just classroom teachers and no one else. So there's obviously going to be a vast difference here between what the House is indicating that they want to fund and perhaps what the Senate wants to fund. Again, Friday's the deadline for filing bills, and there doesn't seem to be any indication that there's a different bill coming out of the Senate regarding school finance, so we certainly will keep watch over that. I believe it was last week, the House Democratic Caucus announced a plan that they call the Texas Kids First Plan, that it would actually be a series of bills that would appropriate additional funding for public education to the tune of $16.2 billion. That's dramatically more than either the House or the Senate appropriated in their versions of the budget. And so you see the different things here that they would touch on. They don't indicate where the resources would come from to fund this. It's likely that this particular plan would not move forward as presented, but certainly helps inform the discussions, I think, once the school finance bill is out and is discussed. You see some of the same things listed here that I mentioned just a minute ago that we think we're hearing are in the school finance plan being filed by Representative Huberty. And so that's a positive thing. I think there may be some alignment, at least in the House, between Democrats and Republicans on what to fund, so that will be interesting to watch. In terms of the TRS active care bill, Representative Kraus and all five, with all five of our representatives, signed on to House Bill 2097, which would allow Arlington to exit the TRS active care plan and run a pilot program for our own healthcare plan. And then Senator Hancock, just this past week, has filed an identical bill as well on the Senate side. And so the committee assignments are still pending on that unless they've occurred today. Senate Bill 3, we've already touched on. That bill is the one that would appropriate or give every teacher a $5,000 raise, only classroom teachers, no other employees. There was a committee substitute when it was heard in last week or so that simply added charter school teachers, and it adjusted the minimum salary schedule so school districts wouldn't be required to pay the additional TRS contribution that would come with higher salaries. And that was voted out of the Senate Finance Committee on February 26. It was considered by the full Senate this afternoon, and I think my understanding is that it did pass the full Senate, so now it would pass to the House for consideration there. And so again, here's the school finance, the comprehensive school finance bill, so that Chairman Huberty is filing. So it'll be interesting to see how these things interact, once they're both in the same chamber. Property taxes, again, there were identical bills filed, House Bill 2 and Senate Bill 2, that would reform property tax law and would put a 2.5% cap on additional revenues that all governmental municipal, governmental entities could recognize from tax revenues without then requiring an election for the voters to approve a higher rate. Terms of school districts, the statement had been made that the state would make up any revenue that the district lost by that cap, because of the cap. And so that was expected to interact with any school funding bill that was put forth. Senate Bill 2 was voted out of committee, and House Bill 2, on the House side, is pending in committee. And so what we hear, I've heard this put different ways at the moment, that this is the calm before the storm, and then also that the storm clouds are gathering. So, you know, kind of wherever you fall in that spectrum, it's just, you know, it's really fixing to hit and get quite active over the next probably two months. And so we will watch carefully and report back, as these things will certainly have impact on our budgets and choices we make going forward.
Very good. That's a good laying of the foundation of what's about to happen, duck and cover. All right, we do have some trustees that have some questions. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Rice. 83, amazing, wonderful, exhilarating.
Days to go.
Days remaining. Hear the positivity coming through me there? Is that good, Ms. Fowler?
Now let's hear the rest of it.
I want to call this legislative session "good, but." I think we have to be careful over bills that we think are good, but they're going to put something else in the contingency. This is now 12 years we've been doing this, six legislative sessions, and I automatically think through A through F. It's good, but we have to do this to get the funding in A through F, and we've seen what that's caused. There's multiple "good, buts." Yes, Senate Bill 3 and Ms. Powell at 4 o'clock, and I came in a little fired up after a couple of senators decided they thought they cared about teachers more than school boards, which just proves many of them haven't worked with many teachers about fighting for funding every single year to try and give any type of raise possible. Couple of our senators, just shows you, haven't really interacted that much with teachers. And I think we've got a, it's a good bill. It's a good thing they're giving the $5,000. They actually just included librarians this afternoon for an additional cost of $58 million. They wrote the bill, and Senate Bill 3, in a nice way, that it's built into the formulas, it's built into funding, future legislators will have to pull it out to unfund it in the future, which could happen. And when that happens, we all know, not taking teacher decreases is not a common occurrence, and that usually doesn't happen to legislators, but usually happens to school board members of what occurs. It's good, but this district and this board has always been very strong and to our teachers of making sure it's not just one group that is getting a raise. Do I think we realistically can give $5,000 to every single other group? Ms. Powell, I think you'd have a little panic on that whole front there. But for them to truly only acknowledge, and they've historically done five different groups, they've historically done teachers, librarians, counselors, speech pathologists, and nurses. And this one, somehow Senator Nelson just realized that librarians actually had to be in the classroom. I still don't know how she didn't understand counselors had to be in there also, but that's a whole different story from where we're going. So it's good, but, and we've got to be careful. We've got to be careful what incentives are going to come on funding, what merit pay requirements. I immediately think back to the federal government of race to the top, that this board was smart enough to turn down and not chase a race to the top, which was a failed program by the federal government that did no good for districts, and any district that got in it then had excessive costs in future years, when it quickly became unfunded through that process. I do think the grad committees will go through. Representative Kraus has put some nice bills out for us on assessments, so that we aren't tied as much to the state bills. I know there were some bills coming out eliminating some assessments. I doubt that'll go anywhere, because the legislature can't give up control for what they're doing from that process. Representative Kraus and Senator Hancock have put TRS active care, a nice bill in place for us, and you've heard us harping on this. We can talk salary all we want, but you really want to talk about impact to a large majority of our teachers, and especially our other staff, that if you start calculating dollars of turnover from employees of what we're losing and the cost from people that can go to the private sector. Unfortunately, a lot of teachers can, you know, you're kind of locked into teaching, and most of the teachers in the metroplex are locked into TRS active care, so you either go to spouses, plan, but security guards can, unfortunately. A lot of our maintenance folks can go to the private sector. So it's a major factor in a major bill. Representative Kraus on some of our, and Representative Turner working really hard to fix the data and transparency on our accountability data, which comes in. Ms. Powell, I just have to thank you and your whole team for, you know, the approach we take is we work really hard off of this board's, our legislative agenda that we put up there. It doesn't, all we always say, it doesn't cover anything, there's always going to be something else pops up, but then we try and state our interest on those bills. And Ms. Powell and her team work really hard on writing letters, and our governance committee, Ms. Walton and Mr. Chapa, and Ms. Chapa, I have to commend you. That lawyer brandy here comes in really handy right here on picking apart, just one time, Mr. Chapa, let's just go with that. It comes in very handy on helping write those letters that are going out and making sure we're getting our point across in the right means, and I really appreciate it, but Ms. Powell, for all your work. We're 41% done, and they haven't really started voting, which is normal, unfortunately. It makes me cautious how nice they're playing, which should make it really concerning for all. We've had great presence. I see some of our PTA leaders out in the audience who took the largest group down that I can remember in the history of AISD, and I must commend you ladies for helping bring that. Next time, make sure board's invited to go with y'all on PTA Day, because we want to go down there and work with them on that same issue, as we've been going down a fair amount. We're prepared to go down for other testimony, other items, as these bills start coming up. I think all my colleagues, there's 41% done, which is crazy. They're starting to vote. And just remember on any bill, it's "good, but what happens?" And it's coming on the next one, because don't get caught up in one area of what they're promoting and what they're doing, because they're really smart, as much as sometimes some of them, and also I said just some of them, seem like buffoons. They're actually really smart on what they're doing, and they have a lot of political savvy, and a lot of people helping them really build up political savvy votes and items to pass through. So I commend all the work that's being done. We have 59% of the session left, which is a lot of session, because now we're done with kumbaya, and the bill filing deadline comes the 8th, and committees start going to work instead of just working on bills. So we have a lot to do. Please reach out. So, we have a lot to do, please reach out for anything on anyone, and I thank all this board for all, I think everyone, as of this last, next week, will all have been down there already in session. I can't remember the last time that's happened from this board, so it just shows. In all our years, so much of our work has transformed to what happens in Austin, and that's sad for the state of school boards, but it has become that means, because so much of what they can do can meddle with what we're trying to do, and it's a constant fight. So, I thank all my colleagues, and I thank Ms. Powell and all the staff for all the work.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and I absolutely agree. I commend you all as colleagues for the level of activism and activity during this session. It is, by and large, surpassed any other experience that I've had on this board in previous legislative sessions, so keep up the good work, there's a lot more ahead. Ms. Powell, just a, I guess, a brief on if there's been any movement or update in the past five or six days since I was last down there on the 2.5 cap, where the funding's coming from, where the revenue's coming from? Nobody's answered that question yet, right?
Okay.
The House hadn't voted on it.
I mean, the prediction is the House hasn't voted yet, and it's going to go, I think there's going to be lots of conference committees on, would you agree with that, Ms. Powell? I think a lot of major items this year, you know, I saw some teachers earlier saying, oh, it's already passed, the $5,000 raise. What has it? The House hasn't pushed theirs out and voted on theirs yet, so it's going to have to come back. I have a feeling they may, they might include others, they might not, and that may go to a conference committee at that same moment. So, I think there's going to be lots of committee negotiations, which sometimes isn't a bad thing, and, you know, I know items are being rolled out tomorrow for school finance, so a lot's going, going to be going through conference committees.
Yep, absolutely, thank you. Ms. Powell, thank you for all the time and energy that you put into this. I know it's a point of interest for you, but to be able to do this, as well as running the finances of the district and the budgeting process, and the potential of considerations and development of bond and TRE, and on and on and on, thank you very much for your dedication and the information. Appreciate it. All right.
She's up here so close, I'll be able to set for her.
That's right, that's right. The default setting is "owl." That's right. All right, moving on, open forum for non-agenda items, I have no cards. We will move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Cavassos.
No report.
No report. Moving on to board members, any board members have anything they wish to share? Mrs. Fowler, go right ahead.
I want to thank Seguin High School's Football Booster Club for inviting us to attend their football banquet on Saturday night. Mrs. Mays and Dr. Rice and I were there, and it was just a lovely event, and one of the best things was seeing those varsity guys put on those leather jackets, and they were so proud, and it was just a really a nice event with a lot of nice speakers. Chief Johnson was there and gave a really nice talk, we had a good time, so I appreciate them including us.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler, very true, and what some may not realize is this is the first time those young men have been able to have leather jackets. Booster Club was able to swing that this year for the first time, so they're really putting a lot of dedication into those kids and pouring love into them as well, so it was a special, special time, absolutely. Mr. Hogg?
I think they need leather jackets, as Ms. Walton said, right now during this winter time of the year.
We were saying that, at least they get a probably a good weekend there.
Yeah, they get a good. I've also seen Mr. Borden and some of the administrators have their administrator leather jackets, which has caused some rivalry with other schools, so, and he actually wears them. I was in a meeting with him the other week, and he had his leather jacket on, which I liked. I told him Ms. Walton wanted a school board leather jacket, but he said we didn't let her. So, let me, I'm kidding, Mr. Borden didn't say that, Mr. Borden didn't say that. I don't usually have reports, but I will report, this weekend, a group of men, one of our namesakes, Mr. Diaper, was able to go to the Tarrant County Junior Livestock Show for our Future Farmers of America. That program has increased, almost doubled or tripled, we're actually not sure exactly the numbers, since that bond was passed and that ag center. They've worked really hard. We have, what, 11 ag instructors now, nine, I can't remember exactly how many, because the classes are just booming at what it is. And this weekend, my family had the option, the joy of purchasing a goat. I don't know. We own a goat, but it luckily didn't come home with us, so that's the positive we got out of it. But this weekend, there was 11 young men and women that made the purchase, the auction, which is really hard to do at the Tarrant County Junior Livestock Show. I think last year there were six, and they almost doubled it up to 11 this year. So, more and more kids being involved in quality animals and going those, and those kids are going to take the money home. Most of them put in college funds or spend it wherever they're going, but they spend money throughout the year and then make it. So, it was a nice weekend of supporting our Future Farmers of America, especially for something where I was able to benefit when I was in high school at that exact same show. So, I thought I made money now, but now it's costing me money, which is, I think, the circle of life, right, Mr. Hill? That's usually where it goes, like, oh, I made money then, now my ROI is negative now again, but it's a positive ROI for, to watch those young men and women.
Very good, Mr. Hogg. Yeah, that ROI is, it's all about in the heart. It's not about dollars anymore. And for those that don't know, those young men and women were able to go see the rodeo in the city suite this weekend as well, so I just put that out there as another great example of how we are in sync and in great partnership with our city, and that they offered that to the children, to be able to experience that in a little bit of luxury, and that was just kind of special to see that out there on social media as well. All right, Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Rice. I will just very quickly say, they had an opportunity to do Career Day at Bevency Elementary this past week, and like my post said, I got to talk about my career, accounting, and I could not compete with SWAT teams gear or the fire truck fire, but I did the best I could to make accounting as interesting as possible. I don't know if I recruited any kids, but what I was able to do was ask the students, I also told them about serving on the board. So, everybody's hand was raised, it's the different things they wanted to ask for. I know they wanted more mac and cheese served at lunch, they wanted, as we talked about tonight, safer playground equipment and a cover so it wasn't so hot. And then, another young man said that he would like to have sports equipment so that everybody could play sports in school. So, I told them that I'd make sure, let my colleagues know, so, yeah, y'all know.
Very nice. I'm sure Dr. Cavassos and staff are taking the notes. All right? Mac and cheese, absolutely. Wonderful. And myself and several of us were at Kraus Elementary this morning, reading, and I just want to say, what a great campus, what great kids there, very attentive, very inquisitive, very well-mannered, had a wonderful, wonderful time there this morning, so kudos to the students and the leadership at Kraus Elementary. Any other trustees? All right, then, Madam Secretary, do we have items to consider?
Yes, President Rice. Bowie requested the number of the impact on enrollment without the activities of buses, example, on the rainy days, cold days, for our activity buses that we're talking about adding. John wanted to get the number of survey calls where they did not complete the survey for Raymond Turco. Polly asked for the number of transfers between Bowie High School and Sam Houston High School. And then Erin, I believe, you asked for the total drawdown on the budget for...
Fund balance.
Thank you, for fund balance. And that's it.
I had a couple of others from Mr. Hogg. You had something related to the on-time correlation for the athletics and fine arts events with transportation.
With transportation, right.
Yeah, another question related to transportation. And then Mr. Chapa had questions for Mr. Sturts, I don't know, I guess we can get that through the staff, but...
Gun.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you very much. All right, it is 10:34. We are not moving into close, this meeting is adjourned.